So we're going to start out the meeting first talking about, we're going to spend some time, we're going to go over the essential questions related to to dual language immersion. And then I'm going to provide opportunities for folks to certainly ask questions and whatnot. So let me start first with. I'm going to pull up the, share a screen and pull up the actual PowerPoint.
Sorry, real quick, can someone promote Shell into a panelist? He's in the public Zoom.
All right, I just promoted, he should jump in here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Everybody see this, okay? Okay. So I want to first kind of talk just in general terms, we're just going to try to build some very basic background knowledge related to dual language immersion. And dual language immersion being a form of bilingual education where students are taught literacy and content in two languages. In this case, what we're exploring is the language of Spanish and obviously the language of English as our dual, our dual languages. Classes are typically comprised of a combination of native Spanish speakers and native English speakers. And families and school districts develop dual language programs really because they see that the value in fostering bilingualism by literacy. And enhanced awareness of linguistic and cultural diversity. And the reams of data that are out there about how language, how we learn language and how one language can really support another to people to be quite proficient in both languages. Typically, when you look at programs, dual language programs around the country, you will find that there are some pretty common goals that you'll see in dual language programs. One obviously is that you're looking for students to develop fluency in literacy and in Spanish and English. We know that takes some time, so it's a commitment that a family makes when they go into a dual language program. You know, the data, depending on what you look at, you're really looking at, you know, committing to five, seven years and beyond when you run a program, a dual language program for families. Another goal obviously is academic excellence is that you really going into some really depth and breadth in a variety of different, not only content areas, but also with their language development. Intellectual flexibility, and we know that there's some cognitive, very interesting cognitive research about students that are trilingual, bilingual, multilingual and their ability to, to develop their cognitive levels. And then just global awareness, you know, cultivation and appreciation of diverse languages and what a diverse language strand brings to a community, brings to a school or brings to an individual. Some of the research on it, we're not going to spend really a lot of time on it. Is it good for kids? There's reams of research out there that talk about how developing proficiency in more than one language can often be the difference between being viable candidate for a particular position, career opportunities. Promoting cross-cultural understanding, just improving their overall communication skills. There's also quite a bit of research out there about the development of multiple language proficiencies and how that cuts across in other content areas. One of the research studies that a lot of people will reference is the Collier study. It was an 18-year research project and it was a longitudinal research finding. Really looked at, you know, what were the power and how, how you could use dual language enrichment to close the achievement gap. Particularly for English learners. But, you know, I don't want to spend too much time on it, but there, there are reams of white papers from the Rice University Studies to most recently one from Portland, Oregon. About what happens when students are exposed to really quality dual, dual language programs. Typically around the country, there's two different types of instructional models that are utilized. One is a 50/50 instructional model where students will start at TKK. And the instruction of the day will be 50/50. Half in Spanish, half in English, and they will progress that way throughout the program. More common these days is the 90-10 model. It's also called the Canadian immersion model. Where you see students that start in primarily in Spanish. At least in the United States, primarily in Spanish and there's a gradual increase of English throughout the grades. There's some really interesting research that at least local research that I've seen related to when schools have decided to, because one of the challenges in dual language obviously is, and we've got some people here and they'll certainly speak to it, is a lot of the, the, the social conversation will still be in English. From students to students and how do students continue to develop their, 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 their Spanish proficiency? As they move through the grade levels and I know that there are, there are certain schools that have decided to take their upper grades, upper grades by fourth, fifth, sixth grade. And they're starting to core those. And so students, students are going to a core instruction with, with one teacher in one language, one teacher in the other language, but, but literally they're holding for, they're, they are holding firm in their classroom, in their classrooms too. When they're in their Spanish classroom, it's only Spanish. And when they're in their, in their English class, they're only English, but that's later on, obviously down the, down the road when they, when they get to the 50/50. We're right now poised to follow the language support model that they, that we basically piggybacked off of Davis Dwyer Unified School District. Davis, they, they run, they've run a dual language program at their Caesar Chavez Elementary School for, I think, I'm guessing 25, 30 years. And the model that we follow here is when students grad, when students promote at sixth grade from their dual language program, when they go into seventh grade, we provide two courses for those students. One course is a Spanish course that's specific for immersion students. Obviously based on where they are with their development of language, which is significantly farther than, than other students that would be starting a traditional Spanish course. And then they also have a period of content level instruction. And that content level instruction could be in math, it could be in science and social studies, but it has to be in Spanish. Following that into, when they go into the high school, we offer honors program, Spanish four in the workplace. But ultimately what you're trying to do is get students to advance placement courses. We currently offer a Spanish language course and I anticipate with the growth of this program, we would add, offer the Spanish literature course, the AP Spanish literature course. AP Spanish literature is significantly more difficult according to students than AP Spanish language course. The passage rate of students in dual language programs in AP language and AP literature coursework is extremely high. When they look at, when you look through college board data. So I am going to pass this to someone that I know very well because she was smart, she was either smart enough or dumb enough to marry me. And that is, that is my, that is my wife, Carrie Callahan and she, Carrie's here because they actually just recently begun a dual language program in their district. And so I want you to get a sense of kind of some, some critical principles that they followed as they've gone through that. So I would actually move.
I was dumb enough to marry him, so. Good morning, everybody. As Gary said, I'm, I'm Carrie Callahan. I'm the Deputy Superintendent for Western Placer Unified in Placer County. Lincoln is the city in which we are housed and we serve on the Western Placer County, all the way out to a little rural school with 60 kids in Sheridan and great little district, pretty much the same size as Petaluma. We serve about 7,000 students. And as Gary said, we just started a dual immersion program in our district this year. So in the midst of COVID, we opened a brand new program, so it was not our intention at all for it to be a crazy year. We thought it was going to be a great year to open a new program and, and we were able to still make it work amidst COVID, so just to kind of share a bit about what, what our process was. You know, first and foremost, it started with a vision and a drive within our district to, to do this and we have quite a few English learners in our, in our district and we know from the, the data that a bilingual immersion program in terms of really reinforcing native language for, for English learners is a really great way to support them in being re-designated as fluent English proficient. And, and so we really wanted to enhance some of our services for our English learners. As well as get ahead of what we knew was going to be happening at some point anyways in our district in that we had families inquiring about it and with the legislation that requires districts to look into dual language programs if there are enough families within the district that have an interest in doing so. We just, like I said, we're proactive and got ahead of it on our, on our own. Another drive for us was, we were kind of in this unique situation in our district where we're a growing district. But elementary is not necessarily growing for us, so we are seeing significant increases in our enrollment in middle and high school. But at our elementary levels, we're seeing either maintaining status quo or we're seeing some decline in some cases. And, and a lot of that has to do with just neighboring charter districts and, and schools in our area that parents have choice and, and they're looking for a unique program. Particularly at elementary and then they tend to come back at middle and high school for that more comprehensive traditional education for their, for their child. So we decided we needed to, we needed to combat that, right? So we need to come up with some sort of program within our district that draws parents either back to our district or from neighboring districts because we are the only, the only district in the, the western side of, of Placer County, so Tahoe Truckee has a dual language program, but you know, you gotta, you gotta live in Tahoe and it's kind of far away from all the other districts in, in Placer County and not really reasonable for it to be kind of that neighboring district where I can send my kid there if, if that's the program that I choose and so we, we are the, the one in Placer County now that has officially a dual language program, so we, we confirmed our vision by doing a survey of families in our district and got the word out for incoming kindergarten families as well because that's where we were going to start the program. And it absolutely was affirmed. We had many, many families that expressed interest and a lot who said, sign me up right now. I don't even need more information. I'm ready. We're in. And, and so we began preparing for the opening in, in this fall of 2020. And we had two, two teachers within our district that had, had both worked in a bilingual immersion program in a previous district and had expressed interest in really helping us get the program up and running. One was already a kindergarten teacher at an elementary school and the other one was one of our high school Spanish teachers. And, and she is actually teaching our kindergarten class this year, so she walked away from the high school teaching Spanish and is now teaching kindergartners in our bilingual immersion program. She was that committed to really kind of seeing this through in our district, so we started, like I said, this fall with two kindergarten classes. We did choose the 90-10 model. There, the research leans more towards the 90-10 model being more successful and, and students actually acquiring language and truly being bilingual. We implemented in our district this year, although with COVID and our, our in-person instruction model, we did not actually do extended day kindergarten this year. Our students were in person five days a week since, they have been since October. But only half day, and so we did not do the extended day for kindergarten this year, but we
Do not make me host.
In school from eight to 1:40 roughly. We located our, our program at one elementary school site with two kinder classes. And it, it was a great time for us this year to do this because we opened a brand new elementary school this fall and, and as a result of, of doing that opening, we had to move teachers from one site to another because the boundary changes and whatnot with the new school. And so to try and preserve kind of the enrollment numbers at the school that was being impacted the most. And ultimately because they have the space available because they were a 670 student population going down to a 400 student population with the opening of the new school. We had several classrooms available and, and the, one of the teachers, as I said, that was already teaching kindergarten was actually housed at that school, so we, we placed it at Creekside Oaks Elementary in, in Western Placer. And it's, it's designed to grow as the students move through the grade, so we started with two kindergarten classes this year. Those kindergarten students will move to first grade next year and we will be adding two more kindergarten classes this fall. So we have four teachers now that are hired and onboard. We had one more teacher within our district that had an interest in moving over to our, our program and so she will be joining the team as a bilingual teacher next year. And then we hired a student teacher. That was student teaching for us in the program and, and she just accepted the first grade position for next year, so we have, we have four, four teachers now supporting the program in the fall. We had a waitlist right out the, the gate when we had our two kindergarten classes, so student placement was determined by a lottery. We, as I said, with our English learner focus, we really felt strongly that we wanted it to be a true bilingual, dual language immersion, not a one-way Spanish immersion, and so the, the difference between a one-way Spanish immersion and a two-way is that at least one-third of your class needs to be made up of nat, native Spanish speakers or whatever that language, second language is that you're trying to incorporate, whether it's Mandarin or, or French. As Gary said earlier, a lot of them are Spanish in, in California. And so we, in our placement, did a lottery with our native Spanish speaking families for the makeup of a third of each of the kindergarten classes to ensure that one-third of the class was in fact our native Spanish speakers and then for those that did not get selected in the lottery for, for those students, they were then placed into the lottery for, for the rest of the seats and so we ensured that we had one-third. And then our native Spanish speakers had a second opportunity to be chosen in the lottery with the rest of the students. And so, so the makeup of the classes are a little bit more than a third because obviously some of them by the luck of the draw were able to be placed in, in the, in the class. And then, and then folks were added to the waitlist just based on their number that they received in the lottery, so we had, we had 54 students that were selected for our two kindergarten classes, so we, we served 27 students in each of our, each of our classes. And then, you know, person number 55 was put on the waitlist as the first person on the waitlist and, and then as, as students have chosen to drop out, which quite frankly has not been very many and, and even with COVID, we had a lot of families that stuck it out with us. Doing, doing online initially to start with their kids trying to be immersed in Spanish was a little bit daunting. To say the least, but they stuck with it and, and then came back in person in October. And we did not have to take very many people off the waitlist and at the end of this year, I think we are losing two students to the program where families have said, I think, you know, I think we're going to just go do regular, regular classes and, and this was just a bit more overwhelming than we had anticipated. And so we were able to add two more students for first grade, so the research indicates that as long as a student enters the program by middle of first grade, that they still have the ability to catch up and accelerate quick enough to be able to reap the benefits of dual language immersion through, throughout the education, just like a student who starts in kindergarten. So, so families are told from the beginning, you're on the waitlist and you might get called anytime between now and you know, October, November of first grade and have to make a decision about whether or not you want to accept the slot that might be available for you. I'm hoping that, okay, so some of the key kind of critical steps is for us was getting the parent information out early and often and making sure that we were constantly circling back and ensuring that we, we kept the parents that, that were interested abreast of where we were at so that they, they could anticipate and, and be prepared for it and we did registration info nights, we did meet the teacher events. We had just general information kind of leading up to the actual registration process. We communicated out about the lottery process. We had to, you know, we shared information about siblings because there's that piece too of if, if a student is selected into the program, when you go through the process as you're progressing forward, if there's a younger sibling later on that wants to now participate in the program, are you going to give priority to siblings or are they just going to be put in the lottery like everybody else? So there's some of those pieces that you have to factor in as well. And, and so we were, we were really thoughtful about making sure that the communication to families was constant. I think our biggest fear was opening up the program and not having any students in the seats, right? And you're investing in this and, and so it was just, you know, oh gosh, we've got to make sure and, and then we were really, really excited to see a waitlist and, and not because we were excited to not have some of our families serve that wanted to be served, but it's, it's nice to know that this is a program that is going to grow over time and that there's, there's definitely an interest and we do intend to, to grow. With the hold harmless with ADA and COVID and all that's kind of happened budgetarily. This was not one of those years where you want to invite a lot of inter-districts into your, in, into your program and, but we do see that as a way to increase our enrollment and to bring some more resources into the district to, to support the program as well as other programs as well and so we, we anticipate growing probably next fall. This, this fall it will again be two kindergarten classes, but next fall we're anticipating three kindergarten classes. And eventually Creekside Oaks will become our bilingual immersion school where it will literally be wall-to-wall because it will grow enough that it will, it will serve just our students interested in the bilingual immersion program, but right now it's still a traditional program at Creekside Oaks and then our bilingual path. So another huge piece is hiring well and investing in the professional development. We spent a lot of money and I shouldn't say a lot of money. It, we, we didn't worry about kind of having a set amount per se. We wanted to make sure that our folks felt confident in implementing a new program and that we were going to do it right because it certainly has the opportunity to fall apart and, and not end well and so we really wanted to ensure that they felt confident in what they were doing and so we, we worked with CABE. They, California Association for Bilingual Education and they have institutes on bilingual immersion. There, they have frameworks, really, really great professional development opportunities and so our, our two teachers and they're pictured here, so Jennifer Vanueva and Kristin Lobek. Both went through extensive training. We actually hired a new principal that started this fall and, and she was able to last summer go through the training with the teachers as well and, and was not a part of the initial planning. But our Director of Educational Services as well as myself went through training with them and kind of did that principal aspect, knowing that we were going to then have a new principal that would, would take over responsibilities as we progressed forward, so this is just a little bit of information about our, our two teachers and, and they shared this in some of our presentation slides with families and we knew that by really pushing our teachers out there and having them at the, at the front that the connection that parents would make with those teachers and, and see the smiles and the excitement and it would help kind of ease the angst of, oh my gosh, my kid is going to go into this bilingual immersion program and 90% of their day is going to be in Spanish and they're not going to know what the teachers are saying to them, like that's really scary. Kindergarten is scary enough. And, and so they were able to really ease their, ease their stress and, and make the connections that, that ultimately kept the parents committed to, to the program. And then, you know, the, the other piece is just, you know, you need to be fully committed and believe in this type of program and so take it from me, take it from Gary. This is a picture of Matthew, our son. Our daughters Lindsay and Jordan also went through bilingual immersion at, at Caesar Chavez in, in Davis. Graduated from Cal Poly, Lindsay minored in, in Spanish and Jordan did not, but, but both are still fully confident in, in, in their Spanish and Matthew is now in, in third grade, but this was a, a picture of the slides that we shared when we were kind of introducing the program to our families and Jordan has since graduated from Cal Poly. But Matthew is now a third grader at Caesar Chavez in, and is a special ed student too, so I, I think it's really important to, to, to share too that this is, this is a program that works for all kids. It really does and the research around the, the success of students with special needs in these types of programs has been tremendous as well, so this, you know, and that was a a thing that was really important to, to me. Especially with Matthew's experience with having an IEP and seeing him progress and, and it hasn't been, it hasn't been without challenges, but education in general would not have been without challenges for our little guy, but he is thriving and, and, and doing incredibly well, learning a second language and, and English at the same time. And I, I think that equity and access piece is, is huge and making sure that families know that this is, this is really great for all kids. And one piece to, to consider too is the, the education for the English learner families. The most hesitant families were our English learner families, so the, because there is still such a stigma around not having English as your second language and this push where this notion or this thought that you should assimilate and learn English and that's what you're supposed to do and, and you shouldn't worry about your kid keeping their Spanish or reinforcing their native language and that is so not true. It is so important for us to support bilingualism and biculturalism and, and and so really making sure that the, the native Spanish speakers understand that this is a huge benefit for their, their children and it will actually make them more proficient in English and reinforce and support their, their native language. And because there's a fear that, wait, there, I, I need them to learn English. What do you mean you're going to put them in a Spanish immersion program? They already know how to speak Spanish. And so there, there really is a critical piece of, of education that's very different for the English learner families. When you're, when you're wanting to support them in, in not being nervous about joining the bilingual program and we have bilingual parent liaisons in our, in our district. And we worked very closely with them to get the word out and we did separate informational nights just for our English learner families so that that we could address their unique questions and concerns related to what it meant for their child and, and, and assuring them that their child was going to learn, learn English. So that is our journey and if you have any questions, I am, I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it over to the next person who's presenting.
So does the board have or any panelists have any questions they want to clarify and questions?
I just wanted to know when you started planning for this, Carrie?
It was about 18 months before we implemented. Um, it was about 18 months before, uh, we implemented. And I, you, you can do it in, in one year. Yeah. 18 months was a little bit longer than we probably needed. Um, and so if you were to, you know, start planning now, you could implement a program, uh, by next fall.
Great. Thank you.
I have the same question. I just want to say thank you for, uh, your presentation thus far.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, we're going to let, we're going to let Carrie go be mom and, and take our son to soccer. So I'll jump on. Hold on a second.
Thanks, Samuel had a question.
No, I just wanted to add and elaborate a little bit. I, I love the, the personal connection and really showcasing from the kids' level because I think that's one of the beauties of this program. And I will say that, when we, we have a goal at McDowell of biliteracy. And what I will say is when we have conversations about biliteracy, our families just light up and engage at a different quality and level. Cause really, and really, um, from their perspective, it's about their kids being able to maintain culture and have a remnants of language and appreciation where they can have, deep conversations and enjoy the wisdom from their abuelitas, their abuelitos, travels back home and maintaining that deep connection. And for Chicano families, sometimes it's about, resurfacing maybe language loss because usually within a generation or a generation and a half, that language is lost. Or it could be about language preservation. And so it sits deep in, at, at the heart of, of why and, which is why I have my three kids in a dual immersion school at Loma Vista and they, in, in Fresno, why we grew so many schools and programs. High, high demand Fresno has a demographic of about 80% Latinos. And there's high, high demand. All these programs are full and waiting listed. We've got 13 programs right now at elementary, a middle and a high school. 15 programs grown, uh, we start, we had three just a few years ago and now we've grown to 15.
That's great.
Oh, so, so just from, just adding to that, the, the element of, from a Chicano perspective and for families, it really is even more so heartfelt and it has a lot to do with the cultural affirmation aspect of it.
Yeah. So, kind of, whoops, I'm sorry. Let's go back a little bit. So which kind of ties into, you know, right into the segue on what, what perspectives folks have that have been part of a dual immersion.
I'm sorry, Gary, someone else had their hand raised. Rihanna?
Yeah, um, my hand was up. My name is, I don't know if y'all knows me. Uh, my name is Rihanna Henry Casasa. I'm faculty at Sonoma State with an area of expertise in dual language and biliteracy. Um, and I just kind of wanted to jump on here when we're thinking a little bit about communicating with parents. Um, I've seen a lot of success also in communicating the economic advantages of biliteracy programs to parents. Um, there's a lot of research, uh, a lot of, you know, there's an entire book by Patricia Ganderah, who talks about the economic advantages of bilingualism and how it can really support, um, the, the entire uplifting of communities when kids are bilingual and biliterate. So if, if, if there are parents concerned um, about children's, their own children's economic success, which I think are most parents, that's another hook that you can use to, um, support their understanding of the program.
Thank you to both of you. Go ahead, Gary. I, I appreciate all these perspectives. Super.
Yeah, it just segues right, right into where we're, where we're at as well, what, you know, we just kind of open it up for any con, for some open conversation about what perspectives folks have that have participated in a, um, dual immersion program or have, have, have watched one closely from the, from the, from a third person, um, viewpoint. So well, Esmeralda, if you could kind of jump in and share a little bit about you, you, your experiences and some takeaways that you've had as, as administrator, teacher.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Gary. Um, good morning, everyone. I'm Esmeralda Sanchez Mosley. I'm currently the principal of Flurry Schools, soon to be Director of Educational Services for Petaluma City Schools. And so I'm just, um, really grateful to be, to be here today, um, with a topic that's near and dear to my heart, um, and excited about Petaluma, um, researching this. Um, so I, I've been at Flurry for the past 12 years. And so everything that Carrie and Gary, described through this presentation, um, certainly resonates. Um, and I would say that, one of the things that I have seen at Flurry over the past 12 years, when I became principal, we were just phasing out the, the final, English only class who was in fifth grade and in the 10, 11 school year, we were fully dual immersion. So it took from 1998 to about 2010, um, to get to that place where Carrie is now taking the school in Western class. So it's definitely in those 10 years, there was a lot of work that the school did in terms of branding and, um, you know, depending on the location of where the school is and sort of the contextual, um, community feel and particularly in Sonoma Valley. You know, if you're on, in Boys Hot Springs on the west side or you're on east side, Sonoma was so, we were really taking two sides of, of Sonoma Valley and merging them together in this really intentional, thoughtful way. And so, um, but it did mean that, you know, we had billboards on Highway 12 that were, um, advertising, um, the program. We would, um, we still do hold, um, yearly kindergarten information nights that are providing our, our parents with the research behind the program, model lessons, really immersing our prospective parents um, by taking them through, um, the classrooms, giving them tours, um, really sort of alleviating questions and concerns that, that may come up in terms of this side, this notion of, you know, what is my child missing? If they're immersed in language, are they not keeping up with academic standards for their grade level? And so really demystifying some of those myths, um, that parents might have that. I mean, I always tell parents, you know, your child is going to be getting all of the same academic content with, with the students that are across, you know, across the valley at Presswood. We're teaching all the same standards. We just happen to be doing it in Spanish. And so there's a lot of work that needs to happen to, um, on the parent's side. Um, making sure that parents, particularly Spanish or English speaking parents, um, understanding that they don't have to have any knowledge of Spanish themselves, that we will support them in terms of making sure that they're completely in the know. And then on the other side, um, as Samuel was describing this, our English learner families, there hasn't been traditionally a lot of convincing that we've had to do here in Sonoma Valley. I think that, that connection to the language and this idea of parents being able to really be connected to their child's education. Um, we volunteering particularly at Flurry is huge. Parents have, if they're not, if they're not able to read or write in English, the beauty of being able to step into a kindergarten classroom and help at centers or, you know, be able to be sort of a volunteer in a way that perhaps they're not able, they wouldn't be able to volunteer in English. And so there's many factors, I think, particularly with both communities that you have to really be intentional about in terms of the, the parent outreach, um, the, just the training and awareness around, um, language development and how that's unique for both, um, communities. And so, um, definitely it's been a journey. And, um, I remember about six years ago, our superintendent at the time had said to me, Esmeralda, why we need to expand? If, if we have a waiting list of 25, 30 kids to get in, you know, why don't we just open it under a kinder class? And I, and I said to her, we need to see what that demand looks like over, over years and see, uh, if we can sustain that because that has implications down the road into middle school, um, staffing, all of that. And lo and behold, we went through about a four-year period where we were able to get everyone in because we're going through declining enrollment, particularly here in Sonoma Valley. And so really looking at everything, um, in terms of student enrollment, the parent piece. And staffing is huge. And I love that Ria is here today because Ria is my go-to, um, for staffing. Um, having that pipeline now built through Sonoma State University where we're, we have teachers that are, um, able to get their bilingual authorization is really key. And so Petaluma is very well poised to have that connection with Sonoma State. Obviously Loma Vista is already doing that. Um, and then I would say, um, the intentional community building in dual language programs is a really beautiful thing. I think that, um, you know, all, every, every community event, everything that we create in terms of showcasing students', um, language development, their academic development. Um, it's all very intentional around highlighting what kids can do in both languages and the strengths of both communities. Particularly with our English learner families who sometimes in English mainstream programs aren't necessarily highlighted um, in the same ways as, um, English only dominant students. And so dual language really sort of brings that parity, that language parity, um, and, and you really build intentional community around this notion of building socio-cultural competence, bilingualism and biliteracy for all of the kids.
I know that we, we didn't get a chance to introduce, we have, we do have a guest. So, Dr., Professor Casas, I just want to thank you for being here. Um, Esmeralda Sanchez Mosley, our incoming Director of Ed Services who spoke. And then also, uh, you know, Samuel Martinez is, is joining us here in Catina um, for the elementary portion. Also, I just, you know, introduce here, we have Jorge Arvisu, who is the former principal at Loma Vista Elementary School, um, that we invited to join us as well this morning. So as I say, my, my, my background was, I, before coming to Pampas City Schools was, was teaching um, third grade in a dual language immersion program down in Los Angeles. And so in that classroom, we had the same sort of, we had the 90-10 model. So by third grade, we was, we were really focused in, I know different, there are different, slightly different variations, but about, um, 60% of, of my instruction was in Spanish. About 40% was in English. And, um, you know, you hear a lot, the thinking, thinking forward, the parent concerns. Just want to echo so much of the, what's been said already, um, that the, the, the two-way program is what we had in place. We had a, a, a dual program strand. We also had an English only strand. So there are different models there where it could be the whole school, could be part, you know, a, a strand within a strand. We had one classroom per grade level that was doing dual, two classrooms per grade level doing English only. Really depends on, on many factors in the school. But I will say that when, um, families, one of the bigger concerns with my, with my, um, Spanish speaking families was, well, we want to, we want to make sure that we're, that we also are learning English. And so that was a huge goal of the program was, yes, you're, it's, it's a dual language immersion program. It's two languages. And by the time they got, they were in about third grade with me, they were taking the Spanish, there was a, um, it used to be the, you know, the aspect, the state testing in English and we did it in Spanish. And, and depending on the level of the teachers and, and I, anyone to echo what Carrie Callahan was saying, the, 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 this hiring really good teachers is, is so important for every, you know, and everything. But by about third, fourth grade, we were seeing our Spanish strands starting to outperform in Spanish, well, obviously in Spanish, but also in English and their English testing. So, you know, what Esmeralda was saying, they're getting all the same standards. I was just teaching the content, the same, similar content, right? The same standard content in, um, social studies, math I was doing in Spanish. Um, this, you know, I think the science was in English. And so they were getting different, um, different parts of our day were done in English and Spanish. So I'll leave it with that. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, um, for being.
Well, hold on one second. I want to, I want to introduce Jorge and, and have him jump in, um, to give some perspective as, as, he's, he's been very, certainly very involved, um, in the development of the program at Old Adobe.
Thank, thank you. Thank, uh, Gary. And thanks, Kate. She did a great job introducing what she's been walking through and, and living. Um, so great job there. I'm not sure if I can add a whole lot to this, you know, all the expertise that's going on from Dr. Casas, to Esmeralda, to Sam, Samuel, uh, and, and the entire panel. Um, a couple of comments. One though, I do like, you know, I was a proponent of 50-50 makes sense, 50% English, 50% Spanish, but we, we, um, are reminded that the dominant language and the social language is English. So that immersion, that's what it is, an immersion program. Uh, and as I toward students or parents through classes, by third grade, as many of you are saying, they are like native speakers. And that's just a, just an affirmation, um, to what's already been said. And then, yes, furthermore, the, the English learner parents, um, the, if you think about it, most parents, um, will say, hey, it's after school, it's time to go to soccer practice. It's time to have some dinner. It's, uh, let's get you showered and get you to bed. That's not academic language. So they do want academic proficiency bilingual and biliteracy and the culture that's, that's shared is just layers and layers above just, uh, just learning Spanish. Um, so yeah, affirmations there. And I'm sure I'll add more as we go.
Great. Sam, well, I know you had your hand raised.
No, I just saw it. I, I just wanted to add, you mentioned some of the research studies. And so there was a, a lot of attention that, that was placed on one, subtractive schooling and the lack of academic achievement in particular for Latino students in schools, that the research that you're talking about showed a counter to that, where you looked at programs where in immersion programs, I wish you could show some of the, the, some of the earlier graphs that the Carlier studies used to show because, um, it showed a slope that looked like this. Would huge benefits for two-way bilingual programs. And then you had maintenance, bilingual programs that were here. And then the English only programs were down here. And then you saw the huge gaps widening and widening for, for, for emerging bilingual students that weren't in those programs. Uh, and some of this was the impetus for so many districts investing in these types of programs. And, and it's the idea of one, the academic benefits for, for language measures, because we were talking about achievement in English or these measures, plus the benefits of the social, cultural and, and primary languages of these kids being able to be preserved with the added element of kids being able to gain a second language that spoke English at home as well. And some of it, it, when you look at my own kids, for instance, but there's something that we see in second grade that happens very naturally in these programs. If you go and visit these schools and look at second graders in their second semester, kids that have not been taught phonics or directly in English, you can put an English book in front of them and they begin to decode fluently in English after having a strong foundation in Spanish literacy. And so it's consistent when you see that achievement transfers in both languages. And then these kids have that added benefit of language and culture, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, it's, it's an amazing thing to see and the research is there to support it as well.
I have a question, maybe anyone can answer. Um, what does it look like for parents who may be English speaking parents who want to learn a little Spanish so that they can converse with their kids or vice versa? Um, I mean, I know we have a Vonsay already here in Petaluma City Schools for Spanish speaking parents, but, um, I can imagine I would want to be able to at least have a cursory conversation with my kiddo.
Can I add, can I answer that question based off of my experience when I was a, a teacher, bilingual, a dual language teacher in San Diego? Um, and some of the research that I've read, what I've seen, um, and read about that has been really effective is, um, kind of peer mentors with parents. So, um, like parent after-school, say, book clubs where they have both language groups together. And, um, you know, so then like the Spanish speaking parents work with an English speaking parent and kind of become like a buddy system. And you can do really formal courses, um, but you can also do really informal matching of parents. And that's another way to really strongly build community um, within the school. There, you know, there's lots of programs that you could implement, but I would not think that that would be a barrier to success in any way.
Thank you. That sounds awesome.
I, I can add it from a parent's view.
I, I can add it from a parent's view. Um, it was actually that, that issue Caitlin became kind of a. Game and it's really fun at, at home in that my kids felt like they had something to teach me every day. Uh, you know, I can help them with math or whatever subjects, but every day they could teach me, uh, Spanish. And that was a game that they played. Uh, with us. It was fun. My, my wife is already, uh, Spanish speaking, but, but I'm not.
Not to mention, uh, that's, you know, great, great Sheldon, how I saw that as well in, in my students, but also. Bringing together the, uh, to the, the communities. I think it's a really, you know, big community bonding where you start to see these friendships develop across, you know, across different communities. So.
Takeaways that, that, you know, I've seen from, from immersion programs, Ben, there's some, there's some really interesting data that's out there that. Um, does, does show, um, when students begin in the program and they're, they're measured against. Their cohorts that are at other schools. What you typically will see. Is when they start taking standardized tests, there will be a difference because if students are, are receiving instruction. In, for as an example, like a ninety-ten model, they're not going to jump out of the gate at third grade. And with scores, yeah, yeah, in English that are going to, to mirror that. But what's really interesting is you see actually a cross of. Of curves. You've got one curve going like this for students. And then you have an immersion curve that by sixth grade, they literally will cross over that. And you see consistent outperformance once, if you stick through the program. Um, because that's how language is developed. It's almost a snowball effect that occurs and you think of a snowball. And then once it starts rolling down the hill, um, it just picks up, picks up momentum. Um. The other thing is, is the proof is in the pudding. If you look at dual immersion programs and I encourage people to, to go into even like a third grade class. Um, and with someone that has, regardless of what your language, um, level is, second language level, I think you'll be blown away by the complexity of the instruction. And the ability for the students to actually comprehend what they are doing and be communicating back and forth with their, their instructor. This is very. This is not your, this is not, if you ever just took a Spanish one class or a Spanish two class, I couldn't tell you how different it is than that. It is instruction truly immersed in, in the language. Um. The, the, the third takeaway I think would be that, um. What this does for, for potentially for, for students is you can imagine if we're, if we're preparing them to be. To be globally competitive. And we want them to be, we know that they're going to be competing around the world for, with other students for positions, whether it's in Petaluma. We have many multinational corporations in Petaluma. Or if they are outside of, um, the number of students that are becoming, becoming expats that are, that are going to other, other, um, countries to work is growing each year. The percentage of college graduates, US, uh, college graduates that are going elsewhere. It just opens up the real world. Possibilities for them. And it, and it creates, you know, someone that's truly by literate, literate has a tremendous advantage. Whether it's being hired for a district position as a, as an educator, or whether it's, you know. Being in, in, in any variety of professions. So let's go, go ahead.
Oh, if I may jump in, I just.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to affirm that particular subject because. As to districts, Old Adobe and PCS, we've been very, uh. Had professional courtesy about not stepping on each other's boundaries. And that, that you mentioned just flips that paradigm. What's good for students? What's good for kids? And I think we're at a spot where we can say. It's not going to detract from each other's, uh, enrollments, but really enhance it. And so that's a huge plus.
One of the questions that, um, came up in this process was, kind of ties into that, what would be the demand for the program? Um, so one of the challenges that you have in it, in, in this type of a program, obviously is, this is not a program where. Where students can just jump in at third grade. This is not a program that if a, um, if a, um. A student coming from Mexico that has limited skills, not only in their native language and, and their instruction. You know, in a, in a fifth grade is ju, you're, you're putting them into the immersion program. You don't automatically do that. And so there's a variety of different factors that you need to look at, um, when, um. And really thoughtfully, when you place students that are not, um, in at the very beginning. So what you find though is. Is there is a challenge here because. Your numbers will drop. As you move from. First to second to third to fourth to fifth to sixth grade. And the reason why you're absolutely will happen. Is because people have lives and they find jobs elsewhere and they leave. And so when the student leaves a program, they can't be necessarily replaced. By another student, if that makes sense. Families just, they don't leave necessarily because they're, they're, um. They want a different program. They leave because life happens. And they move so to somewhere else. You don't often, and that's why, you know, and the principals will tell you that anytime you. You have a student in an, led an elementary program in fourth, fifth or sixth grade that shows up from another immersion program, I guarantee there's space for them. At that school, because those numbers are, uh, you have to accept the fact that those numbers are going to be smaller. And so you have to, you have to, there's a little bit of, um, commitment that the district has to make financially to this when you start it. Because you will have, and, and this happened in, in Old Adobe, you will have, when you start a program. By the time that first cohort gets into the upper grades, you'll have very small numbers. Until you actually build your kinder out, if that makes sense. I don't know if, if Esmeralda, you or Jorge want to kind of speak to that reality?
Ms. Melva.
Yeah, so we, um, we tend to load our kinders on the higher side because we want to make sure that we get every family that wants it. At, at the, from the get-go. So we, um, load those and we constantly draw on that waiting list. I think sometimes families worry that. We, um, does that, is that waiting list, does it really exist? Are you really going to call me in? April of my child's kindergarten year, if you have a spot? Absolutely. So we are really diligent at the, at the kinder and into the first grade that we keep those. Class sizes really healthy, um, because that attrition is inevitable. With this pandemic, um, you know, we had. We load our classes at twenty-three in kindergarten. That's the class size, um, capacity and. Our first grade going into second grade next year, I mean, we're down to sixty kids. And so, um, we saw a lot of attrition. Um, again, because life happens, people left the area. But the importance of making sure that you're constantly communicating with the families on the waitlist, we will call them every two months. And even when we don't have space and we'll say, hey, just checking in, you're still on the waitlist, are you still interested? Um, to keep those numbers healthy and, and draw on those families as fast as we can, uh, because. We have been in, in the place where. Our school district has looked at our numbers, particularly in second grade and has had to kind of weigh. Uh, okay, do we, do we do two classes of twenty-eight kids? Or do we stick to keeping three teachers at that grade level and having lower class sizes for flurry? And so there's a lot of, that district administrative support is really key. Um, because when you make those decisions along the way in any given grade level, you impact staffing, you could lose a really great bilingual teacher. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that, that come into play. But I think, um, being very intentional and proactive with those early numbers. Um, and stacking those classes as best as possible and then keeping in touch with those families and keeping those numbers high and K and one.
Well, and behind the scenes, what is interesting is that it forces us to be a popular program, a, a solid academic program. With a rich culture, ask, cultural aspect to it. And, um. What's really cool is when you have a dual immersion, which is not unique anymore, but it's still very. Much, very popular, very novel in that respect. You get students from, not just Old Adobe or PCS, but. Loma Vista has students from, uh, Runner Park in Santa Rosa and Sonoma Valley, Esmeralda and Novato and Point Reyes. So. They will come, um, and, and, uh, we went from what fifty-five students Tracy to, um. Two hundred when we moved to Loma Vista and we're at four, five oh nine for next year. It will stay popular. Uh, if you build that solid connection of solid staff and students that continue through the grades.
I think there's a general sense right now that the, the demand is there, but, and if you build a quality program. And you invest in, um, you have to be more intentional in your recruitment.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have a pipeline, um, relationship with your partners, um. At, uh, your colleges and universities and your connections with, um. Um, organizations such as CAVE and your. First set of teachers are your most important set of teachers. And they have to be. Dynamic and those innovators that there are, there, there, it's a daunting process to start a program. Without all of the stuff. Some people, just to some people, it's their dream to do that. And other immersion teachers, that would be their nightmare.
Definitely go, go slow to go fast, Gary. And, uh. And make a connection right now with Dr. Cassessa because, uh, she'll be your pipeline for great staff. And, and then. Of course, I know you're doing all these things. Carrie was so good about her checklist. The curriculum, uh, is so important. So I know you're exploring that as we speak.
Yeah. And you're making a, you, you're, you're, you're truly making a transformation of your school, um, just. Just with curriculum and library. The type of library resources are so significant. But the good news is that, um, when, if you were a, a, a dual language program in Northern California twenty years ago. Twenty-five, you didn't have very many choices to go to, to look at as options. You have lots of places that you could look at. And see, um, and work with and resources and support. Um, it's, it's all really there. You know, and it, it fits in with, um, with our, our, um. You know, our mission in Petaluma City, which is to develop effective communicators and critical thinkers. Well, what could be, what could be more effective than being truly literate and be bilingual?
Well, I almost don't think we need to visit schools because we have such experts on the panel, but maybe taking parents or a, a divergent group. But I would certainly invite, um. Visits to Loma Vista, especially Gary, you mentioned the library, a full bilingual library there. It's really important.
Yeah.
So Brett and, uh, Dr. O have had their hands up for a while.
Thank you, Joanna. Uh, I'm Brett Skleb. I'm the head counselor at Casa Grande and also the, uh, parent of a ninth grader at Casa Grande. Who went through the Loma Vista program beginning, uh, actually in its infancy when it was housed at Mewalk. And. I, I just wanted to jump in to give a couple of perspectives. First, uh, my parent perspective, perspective. Uh, making that choice in kindergarten. And then also my perspective as, uh, high school counselor, receiving students who have. Natriquulated through that program over the years. Uh, so first, I, I really want to give kudos to, uh, Kim Harper, who. Was principal of Mewalk and, and really led the charge to bring that program, uh, online before it was, uh, moved to the. The new site where, or Loma Vista currently is. And, uh, you know, back to what Carrie was saying about parent outreach and really. Uh, educating parents, skeptical parents such as myself, uh, I'm, I don't, I'm not bilingual myself. So I was really have that fear factor. Uh, walking into those kindergarten classrooms was scary. It's just, it made me uncomfortable, you know, just not knowing the language. So she did a fantastic job. Uh, parent nights and outreach and so forth. Uh, and, you know, made, uh, my wife and I true believers. And also as my daughter went through the program, um, you know, I, I really, uh. One of the things that I, I wanted, that I don't think has brought, been brought up here is the, is the benefit to the community. So not only just the students. But, um, for me, um, going to those parent nights and open houses and hearing. Uh, everything presented in Spanish first and having to sit through that as a non-Spanish speaker. Um, it really gave me, you know, a lot of empathy and, and, you know, just really kind of. At least, uh, scratching the surface of walking in someone else's shoes, just from a cultural and, and linguistic perspective. So it was, it was just really eye-opening for me. Uh, and, and I think Loma Vista did a great job of, of equity, you know, I, I think we've all been in those meetings where there's, you know, twenty minutes of discussion. And then the translation is thirty seconds and you're kind of thinking, boy, somebody got the short end of the stick there. But I felt like, um. Uh, there was a great job of, it truly was equitable in the two languages, both the instruction as well as just information to parents and. And so forth. So, uh. My, uh, my daughter entered high school, she was able to, and most of the students who went through Loma Vista qualify for the second level of our Spanish for Spanish speakers. Uh, our native speakers program. So she was in an advanced level, uh, you know, not surprisingly. Uh, so just a little bit of that, you know, so my parent perspective was, was really positive. Uh, you know, there were some bumps in the road, just like any other school, you know, we had some. Amazing teachers and some not so amazing teachers and, in my opinion, but, um, given that it was a, a new program, I, I, you know, I would, I would definitely make the decision all over again. The same. Um, and then just briefly, uh, as a high school counselor. Um, I, I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to poo-poo what we're already doing, but just, I. I, I think that, that the, if we're going to do this, it needs to be all in. Um. I, I understand being intricately involved with Dr. O with the master schedule at Casa Grande, how. Resources are limited with sections, but, uh, my daughter's experience at Kennelworth in those two years between high school. Kennelworth is great, but the, the language. Class that was offered to her was really just a classroom full of, of many different populations with Spanish speakers and, and, you know, no offense to everybody. It was just. Resources, but it was maintenance at best. Um, you know, um, it was native Spanish speakers. It was newcomers. It was students who. Were good at speaking Spanish, uh, you know, it was just a hodgepodge. And so I think that. There's a lot of work to be done there in terms of having a real, uh, seventh grade program that really picks up where Loma Vista left off and, and honors that. Uh, so I, I hope that if, if our district does do this, that, um, you know, really we can. Put the resources behind it and, and not do it halfway because it, it really. Um, that, that middle ground, you know, middle school and junior highs is. Difficult for students for any number of reasons, but then that population really needs their own dedicated. Program and not just, okay, you speak Spanish. So we've got a couple of classes for you kind of thing. And again, I'm, I'm not pointing fingers. I just, it's a reality of resources.
I think you brought up a good point, Brett. Like, um, if we do this case six, we do have to look at further resourcing the junior high and possibly high school classes as well. So I think Dr. O and then Dr. Casasa, am I saying your name correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Joanna. I'll be brief. Um, good morning, everybody. And Dan Osterman, principal, Casa Grande High School. I'm also a parent at Loma Vista Immersion Academy. Um, our only child Theodore is in kindergarten. He's in his second year at Loma Vista. Um, and TK. And, uh, so I grew up in Oregon. And then prior to Petaluma, we were in Los Angeles for about twenty years and I worked mostly in East LA, Royal Heights, El Soreno and Highland Park. And when we were looking around to try to figure out where are we going to plan our, our child for school and, and interested in dual language. We attended, uh, the Day of the Dead party, Dia de los Muertos at Loma Vista. And I tell you what, that is a party and was something that. That was so heartwarming and felt like, okay, this is California. This feels good and this is what we want to do. So. Um, the cultural piece is not to be underestimated by any stretch, um, for wherever, whatever your heritage is and. For wherever, whatever your heritage is and whatever your priorities are and interests, it's, it's been wonderful to participate in that and to experience that. And I would say in the context of everything that's going on and the upheaval culturally that we're experiencing now as a country, as a community, it's, it's all the more reason. And it's also been a, a great backdrop and, and lessons to, to speak to our child Theodore about. And use, use dual language immersion and bi-cultural multiculturalism, multilingualism as a platform to do that. So I'm, I'm excited for this. Thank you for providing this opportunity to talk about that. Last I was really had the time to do a lot of research in my doctorate. I remember also the power of multilingualism in the development of divergent thinking. So certainly 21st century skills. So I trumpet the academic pieces. But again, the cultural piece is, is less, we're, we're less able to quantify that, I would think. But, but certainly very important. Last piece, when we think about the whole system up to the high school and students articulating through the program, we have at, at the high school level, if you're not aware, it's called the California State Seal of Bilingual Literacy. And following the Prop 58, which was a voter approved initiative, which changed a language education in California significantly since Prop 227 back in the late 90s. But out of that also came an initiative led by Tom Torleksen, our former state superintendent of instruction. And he put forth what's called the Global 2030 Initiative. And he said, they said, a big team on that initiative. But by the, by the year 2030, which is only nine years away, they wanted 50% of high school students graduating high school with state seal of bilingual literacy. And by 2040, 75%. So we're on our way. Casa, we, we uptick slightly every year. And, and this year we're, we're going to be graduating about 20%. We have a ways to go, but I know that's aspirational and that was a former state superintendent, but I resonate strongly with that push because it is reflective of who we are here in this, in this state. At Casa, we have 45% and growing Latinx students. And certainly the state of California is, is majority Latinx now. So I trumpet that significantly. I just want to make sure everybody's aware of those bigger initiatives on the state level. And, and thank you again for this opportunity. Can I ask Jorge, I know Jorge, you're no longer at Loma Vista, but can you give us a sense of the demand among the community, particularly around, well, both, both the native Spanish speakers and the, and the native English speakers? Part, part of my interest in, in thinking about this for PCS is, you know, we have a substantial population of families that are native Spanish speakers. And what I love about dual immersion is that it centers those families in, in the, in a, in the center of a very enriching curriculum. And so I want to hear, you know, we have, we have one dual immersion in Petaluma you talked about earlier, you know, we're not competitors. I agree on a community level, we're not, we're partners. But then I know the realities of, you know, the business aspects of districts and schools and those kinds of things. So could you speak a little bit about the, what you saw as on the demand side at, at Loma Vista?
Well, I think the numbers do speak for themselves. We went from, I think Tracy corrected me, 29 students and then we had 55 and then we had 200. Next year projected to be 509. And, and I don't think that, you know, we've, we've lost two or three students a year to McDowell, our neighbor just next door, and they lose a couple to, to us. And I think that's going to continue to happen. And as Gary's saying, others move away. I think the demand is there and we, when we flip that paradigm for what do students need? This, this speaks to what they need in a research based model that, that is effective and beneficial for students. And the demand is going to remain with however many students we have at any particular school, possibly not to get ahead of ourselves. McDowell is a good example of that, if we were to, to choose that. And they're so close, but I don't think that they're all going to run to one school or the, the demand is there for language. As we're all saying, we're in California, we are of huge benefit to go through that curriculum. So I do not think that we are going to be, you know, enrollment wars over this. It, it's just something that students will stay for the most part in their programs. And, and we have a few years to look at what the middle school would look like for PCS or the high school as we keep improving it, as we go up the grades. But, but then to look at different ways of, of delivering seven, eight is, is, is a nice thing to start looking at now. And, and I can't emphasize enough to keep looking at, as everyone's saying, the staffing, staffing curriculum is, as next steps. Anyway, I don't know if I answered fully your question, but.
Yeah, I, I was, I was also curious from your perspective as the former principal of, you know, how many of the wait lists that you saw, you know, at your, at your school?
Well, I think as Manalda said it well, there's not much movement. Our wait lists were always 15, 20, 25, we, you know, we would stay in touch with them and bring them in as quick as we could. In, in some cases, as in some other cases, students from other, from other dual immersion programs were able to transfer in. But yeah, there is a demand. There, the, the demand is going to continue and it goes beyond just our city limits. So I think it's good to have wait lists, like as Manalda's saying, but, you know, it's just logistics that you're going to have a wait list, but the demand is going to be there.
No, that, that helps a lot. I mean, 25, that's a class right there.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And for English speaking families and, and in our Northern California environment, a lot of them have been to Latin American countries. They have a inclination for another language. And so it's not only the demand for English learners, but Spanish learners.
And, and speaking on Brett's issue about Kennelworth or junior high in general, you know, if we've got two streams of dual immersion students going into junior high, it will create some demand on, at, at the junior high level. It's a good thing.
Yep. So I know we have another topic later, so I do want to hear Dr. Casessa's comment as well as Katina and then Maddie.
Yeah. And there's also, it sounds like there's a mom in the chat. She, um, her name is Liliana and she wants to ask something. I don't know if you're monitoring the chat.
We're going to have a public comment at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So I wanted to address kind of the staffing issues that keep coming up. To be totally frank, there is no CSU right now, no credentialing institution right now is meeting the demand for the growing dual language programs in California. My candidates coming out of our program with bilingual authorization often sign contracts for the following year by February. They have multiple offers and they choose where to go, often based off of salary. So that's something to consider. And quite frankly, there might need to be some investment from the district for maybe scholarships or something that like if you give someone a scholarship for their credential program, they then commit to the district. I have had two candidates last week decline admission to our bilingual authorization program because they are not getting enough financial aid. And those are two candidates that could end up in any of your schools. So I do think that this could be a considerable conversation to have. Like how can Petaluma City Schools kind of grow their own, keep their own and, and make sure that they have high quality educators starting from the beginning? Because if we don't have really strong educators for the first few years and then keep adding them in, the program's going to implode. So that's, you know, a really strong consideration is kind of like, how, how are you and how are we at Sonoma State going to work with you to create, to work on this together? Otherwise it's just not going to work. Something to consider, like longer term would be, you know, if we pushed the high school to AP Spanish in first and second, freshmen and sophomores. And then there was a dual enrollment at Sonoma State in Spanish 304, which is linguistics, and then 305, they would have almost all of the courses for a Spanish minor before they even get to SSU. Right? I mean, that's way down the road. But so I do think there's some articulation conversations that, that can happen from seventh grade onwards to see how we can, you know, encourage more students to kind of to come to SSU and stay at SSU and then come back into your schools. But yes, it, immediate issue I think is going to be just finding staffing. Because there is like, I don't want to call it a fight for my candidates, but it, I mean, it kind of is like, all of the principals in Sonoma, Marin, Napa and Mendocino counties like have my cell phones and start texting me freaking out in about May. And my candidates are all hired by then. So.
Well, Gary, Matthew, I definitely had to ask permission, working with the union to put out my positions early. And, and Rihanna's so accurate about that. They get swept up right away. We just don't have enough teachers to, to, to fill the position. So that's something to be aware of. And, and Brett, you know, mentions, you know, we had a couple of bumps early on because the lack of, and we've gotten so much better running students through Rihanna's program. So something to be mindful of.
My, my wife is the dean, Dr. Laura Lamio of, of Sonoma State School of Education and former dean of Fresno State. And what I will say that I just mentioned previously, Fresno grew from three programs to now 15. And it was through partnering with Fresno State, building teacher residency programs. And it kind of builds on what was discussed at the last board meeting, those partnerships, the grow your own. If we're talking about a demographic of students, which I know for instance, at McDowell, 86% of our kids are Latinx. 96% of our EL students speak Spanish as, as their primary language. And so grow your own initiatives. And you heard Dan Osterman talk about the huge population of these, of Spanish speaking kids at Casa. So partnering, growing your own, building those teacher residencies. One builds commitment to the district partnership, gives a pathway to kids. The dual enrollment programs also give college credit to students. And so there are ways of doing it. My wife graduated, graduated hundreds of teachers and were able to, so it's through those partnerships. And so I think those discussions should be started. Whether or not we end up building a dual immersion program, those partnerships should be start, started as soon as possible. And, and that would solve that immediately.
I just wanted to add, I'm Katina Haugen, the principal of Valley Vista. And a lot of these conversation pieces are dovetailing nicely with what we're doing. We are running an international baccalaureate program. And within the primary year program, an additional language is a piece of that. But we really talk about language and culture in the same breath. You know, 21 Spanish speaking countries in the world, we have lots of those represented at Valley Vista. So the culture piece is really important to us. We think about Spanish instruction for our TK to sixth grade students as leading toward something other than Spanish A at the junior high. And so we also are looking at that long-term, big picture. And we also talk a lot about that seal of bilingual literacy as a goal for our Vikings that have Spanish instruction through our school and then continue to more robust Spanish instruction. So a lot of this is very exciting for our program as well. We're about 21% English learners, mostly Spanish speaking at home. We just got a student from Chile last week. So lots of countries represented. So the cultural piece is really, really important, which I hear echoed through a lot of our other panelists. So thank you. All right. So Gary, do you want to take the reins again?
So I, I won't throw up the last slide, which is just basically says next steps on it. And, you know, what we see as the next steps would be, you know, a further discussion with the board on whether the board wants to give direction to, to look at exploring and developing out a program. I think we, I think it's clear from this presentation, the why, why this is a good, a good idea. I also, for us, I think it's, it's clear that we, we have the resources, the human resources available to the knowledge, skill sets, to be able to, to put something together, a program together. You know, this is, and, and there's a lot of, there, there's a lot of pieces to it. But the good news is that you're, you're developing it when, as you develop out the program, you, you're not having to institute a full elementary program. It's a, you, you grow into it. And so you really look at it, you take it almost into your chunks on what your pieces are. You're always planning for the year ahead, but you do take it in those, those particular chunks. And we think that this is really viable. We think that it's something that's, it's worthy of our, our taking our time today to talk about. And there, it is one really great way for us to, if we're looking at taking our district to the next level. This is, this is one piece that would, would do that.
Thank you all for your time, all of our panelists on this, this, I just really appreciate the discussion. I learned a ton. I didn't know much about dual immersion coming in. And I just really appreciate you guys all presenting this morning. Maddie, go ahead. You had something to say.
I was just going to echo that. And I'm glad, I was going to ask Katina about Valley Vista and the IV program there and how it fits into all of this. So I'm really glad that you brought that up because, you know, I, I totally agree. I think it's very exciting for our district. And thank you all so much, your enthusiasm, your comments. Thank you, Tracy, all of your comments in the, in the chat. It's been really, really fascinating.
Yeah, I just want to echo that. And also I'm excited. I want to, I want to start. This is great. Let's go.
The next step. Next steps, Gary and Matthew, I know it doesn't need to be said, but to continue to articulate with OAUSD and how they will mesh together in the middle school and the high school. We've been great partners because we're a union school district, but I highly endorse that.
All right. Thank you all. Any last comments before we move on to social emotional supports? No.
There was some, there was a parent, I think Liliana. Or is she waiting till the very end?
Yeah, we're going to have public comments on both at the end.
Oh, it's both at the end.
Thank you. All right. So.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So Liz, this is, I'm, I'm just assuming, I'm so sorry.
Yes, no, no.
You next.
Yes, I, and I am ready to go.
All right, go ahead.
My slide deck.
And see all of our wonderful counselors here. I'm excited.
And I want to get a sense on our time because I know we do have public comments at the end. Should we plan to be wrapped up with this in about an hour or with this particular topic or what?
Yeah. Well, let's see what, let's see where you're at.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, then I will just jump right in. So we are going to be talking about social emotional supports today and what that's looking like. We invited a few panelists, myself, I'll be presenting alongside Brett Sklof, who spoke earlier today also on the dual immersion. He's a Casa Grande High School counselor. Nikki Jackson, who's our secondary guidance coordinator, and Laura Wilson, who works primarily with our elementary schools, are all here today to talk a little bit about it. So just to jump immediately into the why, you know, why is this such a hot topic? Why are we, you know, considering systems around this? We know that we, in Sonoma County, our students and our families and our staff have just been through so much over the course of many years, even pre-pandemic. We were looking at fires, power safety shut offs, more fires, smoke days, flooding.
and and then pandemic, distance learning and everything else that's been put on our families when it comes to that. And so in the Press Democrat, they were mentioning that the youth true survey had been done, and this is a survey that's done nationwide across across many states. And of all the states and all the counties that took this survey, one of the things that came out was that students in Sonoma County were reporting that the reason they found distance learning and the pandemic, you know, learning that took place during the pandemic to be the most stressful was because they were feeling anxious about the future. And that was a very unique answer amongst all of the student populations that took this survey. When most said, you know, there's distractions at home, they're getting used to technology. That was everyone else's top answer, but ours came up as anxiety. And so we just know that there, there has been more long term trauma because of fires and floods on top of the pandemic. And we know also that we're we're now bringing students back into our classrooms and we want to make sure that we are prepared and equipped and and can work with the needs of our students. So I'm going to go a little bit into what our current staffing numbers are of both school counselors, which, like I said, Brett Slove is here representing our school counselors and the marriage family therapists that we have in our system. We call them guidance coordinators. And also also how they're currently deployed. So our school counselor, FTE rate, we have two full time school counselors at Kenilworth, one point five at Pedaluma Junior, five full time at Casa Grande, four full time at Pedaluma High. And then San Antonio has a fifty percent counselor and then another one point O that comes along with the CSI grant. So it's a total of fourteen full time counselors that we have across our secondary schools. As you know, and as we've discussed in other meetings and at board meetings, there aren't school counselors in our elementary school program. So this would be the total school counselors in both of the the elementary and the secondary districts. And I'm happy to share these these slides with all of the board members afterwards. So where that leaves us in the county as far as ratios of school counselor to student, we sit at around three hundred sixty per one in Cotati Park. There are three hundred to one, Santa Rosa is four hundred to one, Sonoma Valley is three hundred, West Sonoma County, three seventy five, Windsor, four thirty six, San Rafael, four thirty five, Nevada, three fifty. So you can see, you know, roundabout, this is both Sonoma and Summerin County Schools. You know, we we sort of sit right, right at the average, right in the middle of where programs are with their school counselor to student ratio. When it comes to our mental health specialists, this is a separate, a separate job and you'll see we're going to kind of parse out what's the difference between a school counselor and a mental health specialist. We'll we'll parse that out. But we do have three point two district guidance coordinators. And those are two of them are on our call today. So we have Nikki Jackson here. We also Linda Walsh also works with secondaries. And then our two elementary, Laura Wilson, who's here with us today. And Gillian Jerick is the other point two who works with Mary Collins Cherry Valley and Pen Grove. And so what the position, the roles of the district lines coordinators is essentially to to recruit and to retain and to work with and to oversee and supervise all of the associates and the interns that we get into our program as they do their hours. Alongside that, our district guidance coordinators also have their own caseload of students, you know, about fifteen to twenty students that that they see. Then we have our guidance coordinators, which are district, you know, employees who work here as guidance coordinators under the guidance of the of the district guidance coordinators of the district wide management. We bring in associate MFTs and SWs, those coming from, you know, Sonoma State. Again, they're, they run the call this morning and have been on part of the panel, always a great partner. But from some other colleges and schools in the Bay Area, we have four point O FT of those. And then a lot of graduate school trainees, those are students currently in programs that are getting their hours and and doing their practicing to become, you know, mental health specialists and MFTs for for children and families. So we're going to talk a little bit, and this is where I'm going to move it over to our, oh, wait, actually, I'm going to show one more thing before we move on over. Just in the sense of how how our mental health specialists are deployed. So you can see that we do have, you know, these are the sites. It's all listed out. This is something that Laura and Nikki and Linda and Gillian put together every year of.
Not showing Liz, just so you know.
Oh, it's not showing? Okay, let me stop share and restart the share. Maybe that will change it now. It is. Okay, good. Thank you, Nikki. So this is, this is where it shows, you know, who who's the clinician that's overseeing? You know, and and what other interns and associates are working at the sites, how many hours each site's getting and who they're supervised by. So just as an example, it's the very top school at Mary Collins Cherry Valley School. We have Gillian Jerick and Alexis Wolf working in tandem there. Gillian is the supervisor because she's one of our managers who works with interns and associates on their hours. Alexis spends twenty five hours at Mary Collins Cherry Valley. Gillian spends eight, you know, also being split between sites. So that that and this, this whole chart, again, I will share this with the board afterwards. So you don't have to write everything down now, but it basically shows this year in the twenty twenty one school year, how we've deployed our various men, marriage, family therapists. And you can see in here that there are a couple of open positions that we've flown them, but we're, we are down a position at McDowell right now. We're down a position at McKinley Elementary School right now. And also at Pedaluma Junior High School, where we where we previously had had support. So those are, they're out there. We, you know, we're looking, but it it's sometimes hard to find, find clinicians and then yeah, so that's the one other thing. And then I'll.
I have a question about that. Just very quickly. So when you say that, so you have a and a licensed MFT that is twenty five hours at Mary Collins. But she's, they're not listed anywhere else. Does that mean that they're just at that school? The the supervising counselor is is divided up, but but the other one is just at that school. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what that would mean. Yes, exactly. Thank you. So I am going to, some of the first questions we just wanted to answer for your, how are services delivered? And what overlapping services do school counselors and guidance counselors support? So that you can see, you know, where are they different? And and where are those positions similar in serving our schools? So I'm going to move it over to Brett, if you wanted to jump in to to start talking about the services of of school counselors specifically.
Sure. So thank you, Liz. So I don't know if anyone new has joined, but I'm Brett Slove. I'm the head counselor at Casa Grande High School. I know we have limited time today, so I'm not going to rattle on and on about all we do, but just some some broad parameters. We, the, the fourteen school counselors operate under the ASCA national standards for the school counseling profession. So much like teachers have national standards, we do as well. And the three domains are academic development, career development and personal social development. And we deliver these services through a variety of methods on the right hand side of the screen. So we are, we provide classroom instruction at all, at all four grade levels in high school on topics related to each of those three core areas. So it's a lot of them are age appropriate in terms of helping the student develop in all three of those domains throughout their matriculation through high school. So just some, some general ideas. So classroom instruction, one example might be our 10th grade iSearch project where we present to all 10th grade English classes on a career development activity where they can begin to explore careers. And working in tandem with the teachers, the students do a research project around a chosen career. So we teach them how to do the research and where to do the research. And then the the classroom teacher leads the actual project or assignment. We also do a lot of individual support, as you can imagine, one on one counseling for students. A lot of your, you know, maybe what you might think of a traditional school counselor role of of scheduling classes, doing educational plans for the student to help them develop their their academic and and post secondary goals beyond high school. Also, in the area of, you know, more and more in personal social development. So we provide that personal counseling element. We'll talk a little bit more about this later because this is where a lot of times we will hand it off to one of our interns or MFTs when the student you know, has some more deep seated, social emotional issues that they want to explore more in a long term therapeutic type of situation. We, we lead group activities. And we do also do a number of parent and student engagement events throughout the school year, kicking off with our freshman parent night in August. Introducing parents to the high school experience, what to expect as parents as their students matriculate through high school. And then come, come landing in with our senior overview night where we present information to parents of seniors and and really all that they need to know for their senior to be successful in senior year in terms of all of the post secondary planning. And then, of course, everything that comes in between. We're also across the campus in a supportive fashion in IEP meetings, five oh four meetings. We attend the the meetings in regard to truancy, our our SART and SARB process. So a lot of support there in terms of getting students to engage in school and in in, you know, better their academic experience. So thank you.
Thank you, Brett. And I'll pass it over to Nikki and then Linda to talk about how that is is different from the school based mental health services that they provide.
Yes. Hello. Good morning. And so myself and Laura Wilson are here. And we are both MFTs. And as Liz said, we helped to oversee the mental health school based mental health program here at Pedaluma City Schools. We work at various school sites. So just to distinguish a little bit between what we do and what Brett shared, you know, we do more traditional individual therapy, group therapy and psychoeducation groups. It can runs the across the board of at the little, at the elementary schools, we do friendship groups for kiddos who need some help with social skills. We do alcohol and drug education and prevention groups at the secondary levels. A lot of what we do is coping skills, just trying to help kids learn how to feel feelings and sit in their feelings and not act on their feelings. We do a lot of crisis suicide threat assessing, you know, even if a kid writes something concerning in an English paper, then that tends to get to the school counselors, it gets to us. And we will come in and help kind of assess with that kiddo and see what's going on for them and if they need further intervention. And all that being said, as you saw in our previous chart, we have Linda, Laura, myself and Gillian part time, and we helped oversee all the schools. So while we have certain school sites that we are primarily stationed at where we have a caseload, we also can be called at any point to any school site to help in a crisis if the person who mainly supervises isn't available. So we are very strength based and solution focused with our kiddos. We know that we get them for a time limited for a short amount of time. We try to focus on what can we do in this present moment to help things get better? We are trauma informed. That's something that is very crucial. It's something that we pride ourselves on as a district being trauma informed. We have a much smaller caseload than the school counselors. I want to laugh because when I see the numbers for the school counselors, I start to have a panic attack. I just can't imagine having that many kids on my case load. And one of the reasons for that is the work that we do is much more intense. Not just in terms of, you know, the mental health needs or the addiction needs or what's going on in the family. And then we also engage with the families and try to help them to help their student get more support. So parent and student engagement is a large part of what we do. We do a lot of consulting. So with the school counselors, with principals and APs and teachers, if they're having a hard time with a student, we can help provide some insight to help them better understand how to work with a student. We get referrals through self referrals, through parents, through school counselors, principals and teachers as well. There's something else I was going to say, oh, we go into classrooms and at the elementary level, we do some social emotional toolbox, things like that. And at the secondary level, we do, I'm going in to talk about sexual harassment and consent in some school classrooms. And we've also done, you know, mental health issues. We talk about non suicidal self injury and suicidal ideation. We go into the HI classes at the school sites. So we're kind of all over the place. But our primary focus is really benefiting the students, working with the individual students. Laura, do you want to jump in? Stuff I might have forgotten.
You could, you covered a lot. And again, like, like Brett is is covered with the the with the structure, we're, we're under the Board of Behavioral Sciences. And so we too are governed by, by a broader based practice where we we have, we have to follow the rules of our board. So that's a lot of it too. And a lot of our when we're talking school based mental health, bringing in the interns and bringing in the associates and training them, there's, there's a lot of management that goes on there to meet the needs of the schools that are sending and send them their their associates and their trainees to us. So we're, we're overseen by two different groups to make sure that we're providing the level of services that that meet the needs of the kids and and the schools as well.
Thank you so much. And so some of the areas where there's overlap between the two. You know, you, you can hear both, there's, there's, they're very distinct positions, but at the same time, there are areas where it overlaps. Both positions will do threat assessments, individual student support, crisis assessment and intervention, conflict resolution and mediation. There's consultations with staff. They both mentioned SSTs, IEPs, five oh fours and their participation in those in those meetings and processes. The in class social emotional lessons, Nikki mentioned the sexual harassment, Brett mentioned, you know, even just curriculum and projects that they work on with students. Community referrals, you'll, we'll talk later about just the various community partners that we have. And I know both our school counselors and our MFTs work closely with them. And collaboration, discipline support. And you know, when we say discipline support, we don't mean they help with the discipline or the, you know, writing up paperwork or suspension or investigation, but more just along the lines of, you know, say, for example, a student is vaping on campus, you know, vaping tobacco, and we want to work with that student and you know, we're, we're not going to move towards suspension. In that particular case, we really just want to work with students on harm reduction. And so both our counselors and or our MFTs can meet with students on, you know, and provide the mental health support around addiction and harm reduction would be an example of that. Case management, obviously, you saw the numbers of that earlier and just general drug and alcohol support. So those are some areas where they overlap. Obviously, this isn't an exhaustive list. There's a ton more going on, but that that's just a list that we can think of off the top of our heads as we built this presentation. So both now, we're going to jump into where counselor Brett is going to represent counselors to talk about what models of service delivery have been effective. And then again, we'll move over to Nikki and Laura to talk about what that looks like on their end.
So at the, at the junior highs, the school counselors are matched to the students based on the grade level. And at the comprehensive high schools, we are our caseloads are based on the student's last name. So we essentially divide up the alphabet into somewhat equivalent caseloads per counselor. And we, our model with the school counselors is in some ways, you know, we're, we're a jack of all trades in the sense that we're, we're you know, delivering information and and addressing situations with students and and back to those three domains, the academic career and the the social emotional. I I think this has been effective. You know, what, where the, where the barriers really go up is just the the caseload numbers. Although I'm proud to say that we're, our, our ratios are better than other districts that you saw on that earlier slide. But there's certainly room for improvement. And so while I can brag that we, we do a lot for all of our students that we serve, there's, there's a lot more that needs to be done. And so although we're able to offer a variety of of supportive services, we do get spread thin and especially, you know, much like an administrator where you plan out your day and and then you know, often turns out much different than you planned it out as various, you know, crisis type things pop up. And so I might be planning to present in a classroom and then all of a sudden, one of my students is in crisis and and I need to get them involved and reach out to Nikki to do a suicide or threat assessment and things like that. So obviously, with smaller caseloads, we could more effectively deliver the services that that we deliver. So we could, we could have more individual time with students and and I think this past year, although it's, you know, understatement in the world that it's been challenging for everybody on our particular end. We put on an immense amount of time trying to reach out to these students who have just been completely disengaged in distance learning, literally off the grid and literally and figuratively where they're not logging on to classes at all. And trying to chase them down, doing home visits. You know, and just anecdotally, and I think we'll talk a little bit more about wraparound services in a minute, but one of my freshmen, I think I'm the only staff member at our school who's ever met her because she's literally been completely truant. Outside of my job, I deliver some food to needy families in Petaluma through the Unavita program. And I grew, I adopted her family selfishly because I wanted to bring food to the porch and see if I could actually meet this student. And, and I'm, I'm glad to report we've had some conversations. Is she back in school passing all of her classes? No, but you know, those are the kinds of things that are, are, are huge time drains. But for, for obviously very good, you know, reasons behind it. So I think we, if we had more time to be more creative, we could really reach some of the students who are not being reached, both in our current distance learning model and as well as in our, you know, in, in normal times, so to speak, or typical times.
Thank you. And Nikki, did you and Laura want to jump in on the same question?
Yeah, sounds good. You know, I think Brett, I was, I love the story of you delivering food as an ulterior way of trying to connect with kiddos. We also go to those lengths to make sure they're fed and to do what we can, show up on their porch. Hey, you know, anything we can do to entice them back this year in particular for secondary has been, you know, a nightmare trying to get these kiddos re-engaged. But so I think, when I think of what models of service delivery have been effective, you know, I always say that I'm so honored to work at Petaluma City Schools because we do value mental health and we have mental health physicians, which not every school district has had, certainly through the years, more are jumping on board now. And as I've stated in previous meetings, they tend to come to us because we've been in operation for so long to see how we make it work. And we really are a well-oiled machine in terms of the trainees that we recruit and how we recruit them and how we maintain them. This year has been a little bit different because our trainees have all been doing telehealth and haven't had the personal in-person connection with us or with the students as much. You know, we, we have found that we are losing all of our trainees this year, which is hard because we put a lot of effort into training them and getting, getting them up to speed. They're gonna be great employees for the next place. We just wish we could now keep them now that they need a little bit less hands-on here as well. It really, when we're talking about therapy and, and kids talking about things that they've maybe never talked about with anyone else before, relationship is crucial. We know that relationship is crucial with teachers and with school counselors as well. And it's just a different level when you're talking about trauma and the hard things that they've been through. And so we know that it really is one kid at a time, one starfish at a time. You know, that old starfish story of the man on the beach throwing the starfish back and someone's like, why are you doing this? There's so many of them. And well, I made a difference for that one. This is really kind of the story of my life, I think. I can at least help the one in front of me. Because as Brett said, there's, we have a dynamite system and we take care of, we do so much for, for so many. And there are just, there's always more. And there's always more that we wish we could have done. And there's always more services we wish we could put in place. And a lot of it comes down to our numbers for us and retention of our employees. So, you know, we, I have a dear associate who, you know, has a student who got hired at In-N-Out and was making more than they were with their masters as an associate. And that's a hard, a hard place for them to be in. I mean, yes, it is a work of heart and we all live in Sonoma County, right? So we know what that feels like. But it's also a matter of, you know, like we have wait lists by September traditionally across the board at our school sites. We start school in August. I was talking yesterday about how we are still getting student referrals and it's May. And so we are doing the best we can to kind of triage these kiddos and refer them to outside services where we can. But that, but we'll get them on the caseloads, you know, for the fall. And that means that we're probably gonna start off at waitlist at most of our school sites, sites come August. And that's really nerve-wracking considering the state of our kiddos right now. What else, Laura?
Models of service delivery that have been effective. I mean, at the elementary school, I, I, when we went in and we were teaching about ACEs and we were teaching about trauma-informed care. And we were pulling out kids' CUN files and delineating like, what kind of things are you looking at as a kid? Like that they will stand out and possibility have, possibly have a high level of ACEs. So we've done that kind of training within the, the teachers and the, and the staff. And then in the elementary schools, myself with five schools and my interns, we go to what's called learning team every week. And so we go to learning team and those are all the specialists and the, the principals working all together. And then the teachers who have, who have experienced something in the classroom or have seen the change in behavior or have know the parents are going through a divorce or that the kid has expected, seen domestic violence over the weekend. They jump into a learning team and, and that's where they're bringing those kids and referring those kids to us. We've tried to broaden models with, you know, being community-based. And when the parents are coming to parent-teacher conferences, we've put together referral lists. We put our name out there. We put, if you need to talk to someone, here we are. And we would love to be broader and, and drumming our drum for everyone to hear and come from miles around. But with our limited number of kids that we can treat with our numbers of interns that we can get, you know, we, we get a little stymied and like, like Nikki said, the, the waitlist gets long. And when we're talking about delivery of services, when you look at our numbers and the numbers of interns and associates that we have, that is our primary base. These, these are people who are on low-level stipends and are coming to us. And what they rely on us for is a, a well-rounded, a deliverer of, of management services that we give them. So they can be, so they can be therapists. And one of the things that, that seems to be a little lackluster that I've heard my interns say especially is that the level of trainings and continued education that we present to them in our, in our district. And so those are just small things that come about that, that we look at as ways to keeping people. So we're, we're just always just trying to keep people. And we typically get really astute, well-rounded people to come in and, and do, do therapy with these kids. So looking at little things that, that matter to keep people.
Perfect. Thank you. And we'll move into the last question before then we talk about anticipated needs and then we'll open it up to everyone. But the next question just for Brett, Laura and Nikki is what do we provide to students that need services when caseloads are full?
Yeah, I'll jump in on this.
And this one, yeah, I remember we chatted yesterday. I think Brett was gonna weigh in less on this one. This is more of a Nikki and Laura question.
Yes. So, you know, at the last board meeting that I attended, you know, I really heard from the, heard the parents who are saying like, my kid needs services and they've been on a waitlist and why can't they see anyone? And if, that's a real issue and a real question. And as, as Laura mentioned, we have a, a board that we are beholden to. We have ethics that we are beholden to. When we take a kid on as a client, we are, we are responsible for them in a lot of ways. And so we can't, you know, we can't just spread ourselves so thin that we miss things, especially with these high-risk kiddos, a lot of the high-risk kiddos that we tend to work with. And so, you know, right now, I know that both Linda, I can speak to Linda and I at the secondary levels, have students who are still self-referring. And so Linda and I are trying to take the kids one at a time, at least meet with them once, assess for where they are, offer services, outside services, which, you know, this begets a bigger question of, of how woefully impacted the mental health services. If you have Kaiser, it's, you know, maybe once every five weeks, you get to see a provider, which as we know, is not helping anyone to maintain their mental health. And so, but we try to do that the best we can, find outside resources, work with the list that, that Liz will be showing soon. And just triage the best that we can and then get them on the, the waitlist for the fall. So that's basically what we do. We know that, again, we wish that it was more. We wish that we could just take on all of the kids who want mental health services. And that's the part where I think we feel like we're struggling.
So when we started off, we, the, the presentation was on social emotional learning within schools. And so within the elementary school system, there's, there's two, there's two different paradigms here. There's social emotional learning, which is delivered and put together by the school principal and they deliver it on campus. And I have a list here of every, every site and what they're learning, whether it's toolbox or komojis or healthy play, Kelso's Choice, responsive classrooms, mindfulness, just a plethora of social and emotional learning that are, that are given to these kids that are, that, that is based and woven into their curriculum and their daily, their daily life structure on how to be a human being and a kind human being on a school campus. So that's, so that's in place. And so a lot of times we are reinforcing that. So when these kids bubble up, those are the ones we get who aren't being held by, by the social emotional curriculum that's in, in the classroom. Something else is bubbling up. So we, we do end up with a, with a waitlist. We make referrals out. We juggle like mad and run between campuses, I do. Sometimes I'll be at four campuses in one day just to make sure I get the high-trauma kids, especially like on a Friday when I got a kid's going home on Friday that I've done a suicide assessment or something really critical with a capital T trauma on it. So we just juggle. We juggle like mad to, to make it all, to make it all work. In the elementary school system also, so we have this social emotional learning that goes on, which is, which is critical. Speaking of being robust, can, is there more things we can, we can bring to these kids? Are there more? Like within, when Nikki and they talk about going into HI classes and delivering curriculum. Yes, we could, we could definitely be delivering curriculum across the, more curriculum across the board to these kids to shore them up, which would be on, you know, feelings and emotions and what it, what it feels like and how to get help. And, and be in all these classrooms if we had, if we had more time to get there. We could also be delivering more on curriculum about social media with these kids being in hybrid learning and being on their computers more. The number of inappropriate things that have been passed or the level of bullying that has come about because of that. And those are, those are all above and beyond just running what Nikki, Linda and Jillian and I run is a, a, a mental health clinic on a school campus. These are other pieces that could make our programs more robust and educate our kids and our parents. We also just did a very large presentation on LBG QTI plus, and we reached every, we opened it up broadly. Ani Larson and Lise Igar put this together. And we spoke to every, every campus in, in Petaluma on understanding and, and helping your child deal with, with adolescence, with early adolescence and, and growing up and, and your emotional, your emotional base and, and how to, how to just grow up healthy. So there are a lot of things we're doing. There's absolutely a lot more that we could be doing to make it more robust and to, to meet more people's needs.
Thank you. So we'll move sort of into the last or what are our anticipated needs for next year? What might expansion of delivery service model look like? And so these are just ideas. And, and obviously the, the reason for having this study session is so that you can hear the information you heard. But we also want to sort of open up to 30,000 foot. What could this look like? What could the ideal look like? How could we address some of these maybe roadblocks that, that Brett, Laura and Nikki brought, brought up? And so, you know, just the idea of a wellness coordinator or wellness center or just starting that broad umbrella for the district that could address so many of these needs. One is just looking at partnership alignment. I'm gonna pull forward a slide. We do have so many community partners and it's a lot, you know, for, for one person to keep track of or for, you know, Laura to be contacting one and Nikki another. And, and our school counselors are working with others. And we're so grateful to our partners and they've been there for us, but just a coordination and overall place, a, a go-to that these partners can, can connect with so that we know that they're there working on the MOUs and working on the, the proposals together and getting all of this done as a community. That's definitely something that can fold under that umbrella. So again, this is, again, not an exhaustive list of our partners, but just everyone who has provided mental and emotional and DEI support in our district over the course of many years. You, we've talked also about having that peer leadership task force, you know, that, that meets the diversity, equity, inclusivity, that meets the drug, alcohol, tobacco needs of our student and just wanting to have overall more student voice and just putting students at the center of these issues to see what are the needs. We've done focus groups. I know I've shared some focus group data with the staff. We also have our youth data, our California Healthy Kids data. And oftentimes what students say is they're not feeling heard in one, in one way, shape or form. They feel like if they come forward, maybe nothing happens or they, they perceive nothing's happening or that no one cares about the issue. And that's certainly not how we want our students to feel. We want to make sure that we have somebody who can promote them, who can put them at the center of any work that we're doing. The discipline matrix, we, you know, we've had a committee in the past. And that is a, it's a very much a living, breathing document. That's nothing that is, we've built once and it's set in stone. And this is how we do discipline. Obviously, we are in a process as a district, we're working very closely with Circle Up to move towards a more restorative model and get all our staff trained and having these relationship-building conversations and these restorative conversations. And so this committee, it's, it's an ongoing thing that, that we take on. We're constantly having conversations, talking about ways we can build in other means of correction into the, into the matrix to keep our kids in our schools, to keep our kids feeling cared for. And so that they can be in school to access mental health services as needed rather than just suspended or expelled or pushed away from our community. And so, you know, it's a big undertaking. It's a heavy lift. It's a lot of conversation because it's nothing that we sign off and seal and deliver. It's just ongoing. How can we, how can we keep shifting this matrix? Grant writing, you know, obviously we know that because of COVID, we might have some money coming or we will have some money coming into the district. But that's not gonna last forever. You know, just having that person, that position that can write grants, that can keep the center and the partnerships going and alive for more long-term, in a more long-term vision would be ideal. I know we talk a lot about student nutrition. We just hired our food services director, as I know Chris and we all are very excited about. But how does that fold in? How does that nutrition at, fold into our wellness piece? And how could a coordinator, you know, work with food services to make sure that, that we're meeting those, those aspects of wellness as well? I mentioned restorative justice training when I was talking about the discipline matrix. But it's also the positions that we're, that we're looking at on our campus. You know, I know in the past, we had those school resource officers or, you know, campus supervisors. But what about the idea of just student advisors on campus? So rather than something that's more of a stick and more punitive, really looking at position, putting positions on our campus that serve the needs, you know, the campus supervisor would serve, but it does so much more. I know that we've heard from student advisors at the board meeting and they talk about relationship building with students, relationship building with families, finding resolutions to, to situations that get tense. So, to, you know, so we're not just sending students to the office. They, the, the advisors themselves can help support students in conflict resolution. And so an idea is to have student advisors on campus and have them trained by that wellness coordinator or have them trained by our, you know, guidance coordinators, just so they, they know how to do conflict resolution. And we can solve things at the lower level between students before they escalate and, you know, really turn into problems. I mentioned 2B, drug, alcohol, tobacco. We, we have Brian Dufour, who's the coordinator of that grant. We have monies coming in through 2B. It's more just how can we align this, we, under a broader umbrella of health and wellness. Our SEL committee work. So this, this past year, we had our social emotional learning committee. And a lot of what came out of that committee by the end of the year, we met about 10 times, was just the idea of, yes, we are focused on student health and student wellness, and that's important. And especially in light of this pandemic, staff health and staff wellness also need to be addressed. You know, because if our staff isn't well, if we don't have our own oxygen on first, how, how well are, how effective are we gonna be at helping our students? And so I think a wellness coordinator, you know, it's not just focused and a center isn't just focused on students. It's focused on staff. It's something that's accessible to everyone. You know, our staff has EAP, but we want to be able to offer more within our district for our staff. Health clinics, as we know, we have them at San Antonio and at Casa and they're connected and they're effective. We would love to make that more robust, remove some of the health clinic roadblocks that come up as families and students try to access those fold them more into our, into our district system. And as Laura and Nikki mentioned, recruitment and retention of mental health specialists. Yes, we have mental health specialists. But how, how are we able to, one of the things Laura mentioned is they, they want more professional development. They want, they want more to feel closer and more folded in with the district. And even, you know, financially, i- is something that Nikki brought up as well. How can we make them want to stay? How can we retain these mental health specialists? And if they just have the go-to and, and the structure of, of a wellness center, I think that would, that would go miles in that. And then finally Brett mentioned wraparound services, ongoing case management. And Brett, you didn't talk too much to that. So if you just want to speak to this last one.
Yeah. So both in the, the school counselor orbit as well as the MFT orbit, one of the things we struggle with is when the school year wraps up, a lot of our positions wrap up as well. And, and many times the students struggles do not wrap up when, when our jobs do. And so there's, there's in some ways a bit of a cliff that the students fall off. You know, if somebody shows up finals week and crisis and they would need access to one of our MFTs, those, those positions are limited by the number of hours that they work and, and the, the workdays. And so oftentimes, you know, the, the students' needs, we either have to refer out into the community. And so oftentimes, you know, the, the students uh, needs, uh, we either have to refer out into the community. And cross our fingers that those connections are made and, and they often aren't for any number of reasons. Uh, or the students' needs just kinda have to go in the freezer until August when, when staff are back again. And so, uh, I, I've thought this for years, I worked for many years in residential treatment before I came to uh. Pedalumah City Schools and much like when students turn eighteen, all the rules change and they all of a sudden lose all these services. It doesn't mean their problems go away, so. Uh, I think if we had a more robust system where uh, we at least had someone who was the, the case manager for. The students over the summer and, and yeah, maybe their, their MFT is not there. But at least someone can hold their hand and hold the family's hand to get them connected up with community resources. And then connected up with our staff when they are back on campus in the fall.
Thank you for that. So, so again, it's again, not an exhaustive list and all of this is, is in progress. But just to present you with an idea of when we're talking about what, what are some things we may be able to do. Um, so we will stop talking there and open it up to, to the group.
I have a question. Um, so first of all, thank you, this was great. Um, it answered a lot of questions I had about the services we offer and how we do it. So we're gonna get COVID nineteen funds from the feds, we're gonna have twenty-seven months. What's, for me, the SEL portion is pro, is paramount, kids can't learn. You know, if they're having issues, um, so. What are some, some suggestions for how we best spend this money? How we best apply this money to the social emotional learning component?
I think, you know, and part of that, we wanted to, to put back on this group, I, I, our grand idea, you know, and, and a grand idea was sort of what we presented in that last slide. Around having that large umbrella that addressed these many pieces, cuz every, every piece of that that was in that list is gonna cost money, you know. Whether it's, y- you know, what we're doing to professionally develop our um, trainees and associates. Or whether it's having that wellness center coordinator, I mean, all that, all that does come at a cost and so that's sort of what that last piece was. But again, we, we also wanted to open it up to all of you to see what, what other ideas there may be, um, as a start of a conversation.
Can I ask about elementary counselors? Like why, why does our district not have them? Like when I hear Nikki talk, um, she. Is jotting down some things, um, just like by the time they get to you, the high school level. Um, it's like maybe we could do more early intervention at that elementary level. Um, I mean, I would like to see that added. Me and Brett's talking about, you know, the Aska model and there are elementary school academic counselors as well. I mean, I've been very vocal and it's no secret that I would like to see those added uh, K six as well as K eight. Um, Brett also spoke to, you know, he might have a classroom guidance he's about to deliver and then there's a kid in crisis, he's gotta. Drop it all and deal with that and maybe hand it off to one of his colleagues, but then when I look at the K six or K eight, it's like. That's the principle, you know, who does she hand it off to? Um, and then, you know, you guys are full with your, you know, fifteen to twenty-five caseloads, let's say there's another kid in crisis, like you don't want to continue to turn them away, so.
Yes, Joanna, I agree with that and I think that, um, if we can really start, I feel like, uh, for whatever reason. Who I've been, my specialty seems to be these highly traumatized boys lately. Um, and for whatever reason, that's just what the majority of my caseload has been the past couple of years and I feel like so much of what I do with them. Is help them learn that feelings, you're supposed to feel them, it's okay, it's healthy, this is what we do with them when they come up. And I feel like if we could have that common language at a very young age, and I know I'm talking about societal standards here. But if we can stop telling boys to suck it up and don't cry and whatever. Um, but if we can have that social emotional language built into the classroom where you're not being pulled out to talk to. Uh, you know, you're not being singled out or other or different because this is a societal problem. Um, let's learn how to deal with these feelings, let's learn how to sit with them young. And if we have, um, you know, school counselors at elementary levels, that's a lot of what they, that's a lot of what they do. I have a lot of friends who work in those jobs and they go into classrooms and we do this as much as we can as well. Um, we go into classrooms and read stories and talk about social, emotional and here are your tool, tools and your toolbox to use. So I think that would help us all the way up, I agree.
And, and absolutely, being in the elementary schools, especially when McKinley has packs. And Cherry Valley also has a seventh, eighth grade and they don't have any kind of a, an, an academic counselor, sorry, a counselor, counselor Brett's cringing. Um, they, they don't have that level of counseling services at all, even though they do have a junior high on their campuses. And so when we look at placing our interns, I mean, we look at high level of needs and those, those schools tend to have them.
Absolutely. That's a, an area both Joanna and I have been talking about a lot is, especially for the K eight schools. Is why don't they have a counselor or s, they need it desperately?
And I also, I also think, um, I know we have, um, we have a mentor me gal that is just. An amazing woman and she just does so much to, um. To run, to run the chaos part where, where Liza Arker gets into something and there's something disrupted going on. She's kinda, she's a student advisor and Cherry Valley also has a student advisor that, that delivers just like in the moment. I mean, in the moment when a kid is laying on the floor, you know, kicking the easel in kindergarten, I mean, please don't disrupt my schedule. And call me in to deal with it, I mean, a student advisor could, could, could handle that kind of a thing. And so there is a level in the schools, in the elementary schools that they do need something that's not critical mental health. Sustained mental health, which is absolutely important, but they need somebody in there doing some triage.
And that requires training, yes?
That's trauma informed, that's absolute training, yes, it requires a high level of training.
A good place to spend money.
Do you have a question or comment, Sheldon?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to what, um, Liz mentioned on the very first slide about, you know, the Sonoma County data. On uh, our kids' mental health and, and ask more mask about the, um. You know, the systemic trauma that we're going through and pulling out of with COVID. Especially with fall coming with the expectation of being fully in person. Everything that I'm reading is saying that, you know, we have to acknowledge, uh, and, and this trauma that we've, that everyone has gone through. Uh, and, and address it systemically in order to create the learning environment that there, that can help our children. So I, I wanna, I wanna ask the panel for their ideas about, you know, what. What we can do on a systemic level in the fall, uh, to get kids, uh, you know. Uh, working through this past year's trauma and, and preparing themselves for, for, for the learning. And when, what kind of supports we can provide to, to, to do that, to do the systemic stuff.
I can, oh, go ahead.
And uh, so one of the, one of the ideas I floated around with some of my colleagues, uh, when we're talking about, you know, uh, the. All of the high schools and, and, and the junior highs, I think to a certain extent, you know, we're just staring down the barrel of more failures than we've ever seen. And it's not unique to our school district by any means. Uh, but, uh, you know, not only have these students failed classes, but they've, they've failed because of, you know, this pandemic. In addition to any other, you know, barriers that were in their way, uh, through normal or typical times. And I, I think even just moving into summer school, we're, we're talking about credit recovery, credit recovery, credit recovery, but we really need to. Going back to that wraparound services idea, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna bring a bunch of students on campus this summer to recover credits. Who quite literally haven't gotten out of bed for a year in, in many cases, you know, doing, if they show up to school, they're laying in bed and, and failing. And so, um, one of the ideas I had is, is using that case management model where. Instead of me trying to track down a student and saying, oh, you could really benefit from seeing a therapist, oh, you know, there's nothing wrong with me, I'm fine. Um, in this credit recovery model, could we have therapist case managers attached to? Yeah, I would argue even starting with summer school, but certainly in the fall, to the, the credit recovery pr- program. And we haven't, we don't even really know what that's gonna look like yet. So much like a, a student with an IEP has a case manager. Or a student in our therapeutic support program, that program has a, a therapist attached to the classroom. Uh, because these students are not gonna just walk into class and start earning credits, we need to have someone who's gonna help. In a team model, ad- a- address these social emotional things, you know, we're, we're pulling them out of the, the cave they've been in. And I, you know, as school counselors, we can do a lot of that, but again, just going back to the, the sheer numbers on the caseloads. Where we can't give that, that individual touch. And so I think using that special ed model of saying, okay, here's thirty students that need to make up math, you know, Fs in math. And here's this therapist that's gonna work with the teacher and, and do some social emotional things to have a, a full package. To, to help those students uh, recover credits, but also recover their, their lives, so to speak.
I wanna say that I, I totally appreciate that, I really appreciate what Angela wrote in the comments as well about like talking about rebuilding community and connecting. These kids, we're hearing from kids across the board that they've gained weight, that they don't know how to dress in normal clothes anymore, that they're so, you know. Teenage years are your most self-conscious years already and there's so much anxiety for them about coming back on campus. Um, and I also wanna say that like, you know, some of our school sites have dedicated guidance specialist positions. Where they, you know, pay for an associate or a trainee or associate or licensed someone to be on campus, but not all of our school sites do. So that's something to look at, but when we're talking about like temporary funding, I get super anxious. About creating mental health positions specifically with that money. So I really liked Liz's idea of somebody who can then, there are grants out there, just you do not want me writing grants. Um, so I can barely get my kid through sixth grade math. So, you know, I think that, you know, the idea of getting that funded, you know, funded beyond just the emergency stuff that we're talking about now. I think is really important too, cuz these needs aren't gonna go away.
I think you've, I'm sorry Laura, go ahead.
I would like to rattle off a list and then I'll tell you what it is. Toolbox, health play, kimochi, changing perspective, zones of regulation, IB. IB learner profile, school moves, Kelso choice and character strong. There are seven elementary schools, those are all the SEL programs. Character strong is the only one that goes into junior high and goes into a high school. I have always been absolutely baffled on why we're not taking these kids when we get them in K through six and teaching them something that takes them all the way. Why isn't there a level of continuity of care? You know, you've got Kelso's choice and you've got, you've got toolbox and all of a sudden you get to junior high and none of the language is there anymore.
Yeah, it's the same language, that's so helpful to be able to carry that through.
Continuity of the language that if we chose a program for this district that started here and took them all the way through. When you get them to high school and everybody's been trained in it, we're all speaking the same language.
And some of that, yeah, Laura also speaks to our, our partnerships too, cuz then we have our elementary schools, but we also have our feeder districts too. And so I think that it's also a broader conversation, you're right, of, of talking cross district with WA, with Old Adobe, with Cinnabar about. You know, what is that language that we can use, you know, that will then matriculate into our middle schools and our high school, our secondary school district, so, yeah.
We could, we can make some continuity and, and create some language and some, some learning skills that these kids carry with them and they just don't, oh no. Zones of regulation was, was sev, was sixth grade. You know, it's learning to, it's the one-on-one, being a human being skills that carry with you that somehow we need some continuity with, in my opinion.
Are there programs that go all the way through high school?
Uh, character strong, which I'm not hugely familiar with, they have it over at uh, McKinley in the. Sixth, seventh, eighth, and then it goes to junior high and I believe Casa dabbles in it. And it's, it's a program they have there, I don't know the program, I haven't had time to learn.
It sounds sort of hit or miss though, yes?
It sounds like we need to do more research on it.
Yeah.
I love the idea of a K twelve SEL curriculum, that's awesome. I also wanted to, um, ask or, um, actually all of you Brett, Laura and Nikki all touched on different, um, aspects of, um. Just like kids being at home during the pandemic, Laura, you talked about social media that's just in front of them all the time. And we know, like, even as adults have been triggered by watching, you know, black people be killed by police. What, by, you know, um, what's going on locally. All the sexual harassment and sexual assault allegations and crimes committed against women in our community by various elected officials. There's just been a lot thrown in these kids' faces. Um, so I think also when we talk about adding, uh, support staff, we need to make sure we're hiring people that are diverse and culturally competent. And, um, just aware of this because, you know, our kids are not a monolith, like we need to have representation. And at least people who can speak to all of these different issues going on in their communities.
Yeah, I agree, we also talked about, um, wondering if we have a bilingual stipend for MFTs, I don't know that we do. Um, but I haven't checked with HR, but even just something like that, that could help us recruit every year with our trainees, we're like. Please, 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 can we get someone who speaks Spanish at least and we, you know, not this year, not again. But I totally agree Joanna, that it's definitely a representation issue as well. And I'm excited to say that next year we have a couple of male MFTs coming in, which is not, uh, you know, not typical as well. But unfortunately, I think almost everybody is white again, so we're trying.
Well, also, I, that also le- leads to another question, um, like what type of training or professional development do you all get?
No, nothing.
No.
We create it, we create it for our people.
Behavioral sciences to keep our license in, in status, we have thirty-two CEUs that we have to do every two years. And currently, we take care of that ourselves, um.
We have been able to, through the 2B grant though, offered motivational interviewing, but that kinda got shut down with the pandemic. And then the ACEs training the year before, we had, when, um, they came and spoke at the Hannah Boys Center. So, you know, a few things that the district has, has done PD wise, but yeah, not, not the upkeep of license.
You know, one thing we haven't touched on in the elementary school, just going back to that for just a second, these things are bubbling up. Um, I, I know supervising the interns and doing therapy myself with these kids and I know. The number of CPS reports that are typical in a year, they've not happened. This has been a year where these kids have been home, they've been steeped in trauma. If they're witnessing domestic violence or a family who's in a divorce and they've been with the older siblings and they've been exposed, exposed to more things. And when they come back, I, I highly think that the, us getting in and getting these relationships where, with these kids. That are willing to do it, to, to talk about molestation and talk about body safety and all those things. I think, I think we're gonna have a tough year next year with a lot of disclosure.
I know we are because just since.
Isolation.
Just since students have come back, we are, the number of CPS and PPD reports have been through the roof for us. Just the few kids we've been able to see live and in person, which isn't a ton. And I've also been on Zoom calls with kids as their parents have been screaming and arguing in the background. So it's a whole other, it's a whole other level, I agree.
Right, I mean, that's been talked about, we're at like ten percent of the typical reporting, so then when we get back fully in August, it's gonna be, oh, the other ninety percent. Are back and.
We can't.
All gonna be overloaded.
That's why I really like the, uh, the idea of starting in summer school. I mean, not until August, but, um.
That was a great idea, I agree, yeah.
So I think we're, we. You know, as you're moving forward, I think you're really looking at two different things. I think you're looking at, um, the realities of. The short term, we have, this is gonna be an outlier year. We know that there's gonna be more triage work that needs to be done and that means there needs to be more bodies. Professionals to be able to, to do that. The, the long-term piece, the planning piece is, is probably the real critical one and it needs to be done next year. Because we buy ourselves a little bit of time because of the, the COVID-related funding. To that, but what you wanna be able to do is the, the district is gonna want to be able to come back. With, to cabinet with a sustainable plan. And what I mean by sustainable means budget sustainable. The worst thing that you could do is start something and then cut it. Two years from now, and so the, 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 the tricky part in all of this, I don't wanna be the downer on it, because anything's doable. But there's a, there's a saying, you know, we can do anything we want, we just can't do everything we want. We would have to, as part of that. We would have to, as part of that sustainable plan, because you have to assume that these one-time monies are going away. We'd have to say that if, 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 if things went south, what else would be cut? Instead of that, the time to actually to start talking about, about the planning for long-term, but also looking at prioritizing is, is a really important part of long-term planning. But I think that, you know, everybody's on the same page that there structurally are some long-term, long-term issues that we want to do. And on a short term, we know that there's some real needs that we've got to address right away. And, you know, Brett's talked about it from a high school level. You guys have both talked about it related to everything that you're seeing TK through 12. And we do have some monies. But you don't want to develop those, you, you want to develop those monies to deal with the, 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 the intent of those dollars is to triage. It's to academic triage, it's to triage on their social emotional. That 10 other dollars are not to develop, not to run a program that's going to continue, because there's no money to follow that. However, some of those monies can be used for planning, for planning for long-term. So getting the right people in the room and, you know, you know, compensating people for their time to do that above and beyond the work that they're going to do at the sites. So I know at our next board meeting, we'll be coming back to talk about some of the COVID monies specifically related to that. And we, and we'll try to get a sense of some ideas related to what we can do. Now, some of those dollars, we don't have to plan for immediately, others, other items that we have to plan for immediately. So it's a little bit tricky, but it's doable. It's definitely doable.
Should we move into public comment? Just looking at the time?
Yeah, we should. But Dan, did you have something real quick?
Oh, thank you, Joanna. I kind of forgot to put my hand up. I just wanted to cheer us on in developing the K-12 system. Certainly, I, I wonder if there's an opportunity with the HI curriculum. Certainly, we, we have the graduation requirement in high school level. I love the student advisor idea, Wellness Center on campus. You know, the summer school, I think that's amazing. And Joanna, I couldn't agree more, the intersectionality of, of current events that are happening now and how that's disproportionately affecting our students. That's always been there, we know that. But there's a lot of opportunity, I think, here to really connect equity, diversity, inclusivity, and conversations about race with our social emotional learning program. So I look forward to that very much. So, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we are going to move into public comments. If you have a comment, please put your name and your comment in the chat.
I'm going to read our policy for public comment. Under Government Code Section 549 by 4, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, provided it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted right into the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment or non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. So we will open the chat. I think it's already open.
Yeah.
Go ahead and put your first and last name and the topic that you would like to speak towards.
I know there was someone earlier, but I don't know if she's still here.
We will, um, we will reach out on the recording, try to find out what the comment was. I think we can probably close public comment.
Okay.
Let's see, wait a minute. Let's see.
Well, I need Matthew or Cliff to translate for me.
Want to translate it, Cliff?
Yeah, she's just saying sometimes Latinos don't go to, you know, psychologists, because they think they don't need help, but, you know, they don't know how many Latin students go or could need the help. And sometimes these projects start at home or go home or go, or there are some projects that provide services at home.
Thank you, Cliff.
I think that ties back to what, you know, the comments related to, you know, being very intentional about, about recruitment and trying to expand our, you know, our access points. One other, I think one other piece related to the plan, planning for this, and I think you, the, the MFTs both alluded to this. This is not a, this problem, this, this situation, this predicament that we're in right now does not get solved by MFTs and counselors. It's a whole team effort. Programs that, that all of the adults on campus can embrace there and be part of building a healthy culture and responsive one, a responsive one, one that when you see something happening that's, that seems amiss, even though that student is not on your roster or is not, that you're, you're doing something as a, as a professional. I think we, we do a really good job of that by and large. But we don't have a unifying curriculum or unifying language. It sounds like that could assist us in this process. So that would be something that we would want to really look at, because, you know, those things don't cost anything in terms of dollars. It's really in terms of commitment of effort, which is critical.
I do have a question though about next steps. I will ask Matthew and maybe Jason, our next head of HR. But when, like, when we look at next steps, you know, and getting these monies and starting to advertise, I mean, if we're talking about potentially, I don't know, hiring counselors for the summer or in the fall, like, when do we start putting those out there? Because I know most people probably already have themselves set for next school year. So I'm just wondering about timeline on that.
So, I mean, the timeline for hiring counselors for next year, is that the question? We've, we've already, you know, put out, we've been advertising for high school teachers, for elementary teachers, counselors would be this timeframe. I mean, we would be, we, we would start, want to start to look very soon. As I think Nikki alluded to, people are already starting to get hired, people are starting to get jobs.
And we have two positions of many.
But we also have to come up with a plan, and Cliff might be able to speak to this for the many of these dollars that we're hoping to receive. So Cliff, I don't know what, whether you want to talk about learning continuity plan.
Well, I know I'm going to talk about this on Tuesday's meeting a little bit more, but, um, yeah, we're, we're looking at all the different funds we're receiving, both federal and state. And some have overlapping purposes. And some have different expenditure deadlines, but I think again, it goes back to that conversation of these are one-time monies, some of them last three years, some last two years. So there is, it's a little more than just one time, one year. But there, there is a certain amount carved out in, in each of them for learning loss mitigation, which includes social emotional support. So there, we are supposed to spend a portion of the money. And I'm assuming we're going to spend most of the money on those two things. On, you know, credit recovery, acceleration, learning loss mitigation, and social emotional health. So they all kind of overlap in that, that region. I'll, I'll have a little more to say on, on Tuesday, but.
We, part of, part of what we're hoping is going to happen related to the Professional Development Day that's taking place at the end of the year for staff, is that they will be, they will be looking at their own students for this year and trying to identify who are the students that they're worried about. We need to, this is kind of becomes a by name, by need. We need to know who are those kids, when, whether that's academic, whether that's, you know, social emotional, that's, that's going to be really critical. And I think also, as it relates to summer school, because we can, we can, we anticipate that we're going to, we're going to offer certainly to our folks within opportunities. Some of our folks that are providing these services now to see if they're willing to, to, to continue some services in the summer. But we're also going to be evaluating those students that are coming to the summer programs, particularly are credit deficient and are youngest, to identify who are those students that we are going to, we, we need to have further conversations about. I think it's really critical at this point, whether it's, whether it's academic or social emotional though, that each school site knows who those students are and what services are, need to be provided. Because then we'll have an idea of really what our, what our deficit is.
I have a, I have a couple of questions along that line. So Gary, you're talking about continuity of service, kind of the wraparound that Brett was talking about. And, and beginning this for summer school so that we're not slammed in the fall, having some sense of what's going on with our students and families and staff. It seems like we're in May. So when does this, I mean, if we start on the 7th or, or of June, it seems like there needs to be an immediate response to this. Kind of along the same lines that Joanna mentioned with Matthew, if we're not, if, are we, do we have advertisements for counselors now? It sounded like you said that, that Matthew, that you said that it's not out there yet, because we may not have the funding yet. I'm, I'm just confused about the timeline. From everything that we've heard today, it feels like we need to have something in place to address these issues like yesterday.
You know, I think, Maddie, that time is of the essence, but I think it's of the essence for everybody. I mean, we're literally as the, you know, on a, within the last, within the last day or two, we're starting to get information about the, the actual funding and what's coming in. And you, you do need to create a plan and you've got to go slow to go fast. Yes. And, and everyone, you know, at a certain, at a certain point is going to start to want, they want to hire all, you know, counselors and, well, people are getting jobs right now. So it's a little bit of a catch 22, but yeah, I agree.
So then you're saying that you have to have that, because I was in that webinar last week and they were talking about this learning plan and going, what learning plan? And so you, so you're saying that that has to be in place kind of first and then go into the hiring piece. Is that correct?
We need, we need to know what we're hiring for. What, what is, yes, what are the positions? What is the, what is our plan? Doesn't have to be formalized anywhere. We, we need to have a plan to start hiring. Yeah.
Okay. I don't, I don't think I'm making myself clear, but that's.
So we just found out that we've, we found out our, our numbers literally on, what day was that? When I passed that out, was it Monday, Tuesday? So we just found out our numbers, we need, we have until the end of the, we, we have only till the end of the month for the first round of funding to come up with a, a, a plan for that first set of dollars. We anticipate that some of that, some of those monies will probably be spent with direct services for students in this particular area. And that's kind of what we were going to talk about on Tuesday at the board. But we wanted to have, we, we, what we didn't have prior to this is this conversation right now, which is, is, you know, what are the, what are, looking at it as a more holistic level, what, what are the needs, the true needs? Not only immediately, but moving down the road. I think the moving down the road piece is going to have to take a lot more thought, but the, the initial, the first initial set of dollars will be a lot of triage, immediate support, support work.
So I just wanted to add that there is a June 1st deadline to get to the board for approval of a plan for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, and that's state money. So that's not the new federal money that's coming. The state still has to apply by June 7th to the feds to say, this is how we want to use that money. So that, there is not a June 1st deadline for the new Fed money. It is for the state money. And that state money is meant to expand learning opportunities, like add support programs before and after school, credit recovery programs, summer school. So some of that plan is already in place, right, with what we're doing with summer school. You know, we, we jumped on that before we knew about, we had, you know, we knew had, have a plan. So that one kind of already in motion. But to Matthew's point and Gary's point, the larger amounts of money, the S R 2 and S R 3 funds, we, we, whether, whether or not it's a, an actual template, we do have to have an idea and a focus on what we want to do before we just go out and post positions. So it's, you know, it's, we need, we need to know where we're going and, you know, before we post stuff.
What are the grade levels currently planned for summer school? Is it K-12?
K-2 mainly on reading support for students who, you know, lost, you know, lost that kind of focus this last year and part of last year. And high school mainly on credit recovery.
What about the other grades? Those kids in those grades are going to need it as well, I would think.
It, we. Go ahead.
We, we don't, right now, we don't have anything planned for those, those other grades. We tried, we tried to focus on the, the areas where we thought there was the biggest need. Clearly, those, those younger students where you're learning to read before you can read to learn, like, that was the kind of the key area we wanted to focus on. And then high school where students, obviously, a lot of students have received Fs and have lost credit opportunities. So those are kind of the big triage focus areas right now.
It's, it's, Ellen, it's really a, it comes down to a staffing issue. There, that, school districts around the area, there's only so many teachers that, that have an interest in doing summer program. We're already struggling to get the staffing for just what we're, we're doing, because we're expanding what we're doing so much. We'll be, we'll be serving more kids this year in our summer school than we ever have, certainly in the last 12 to 14 years.
So are we going to do a bridge program for eighth graders into ninth grade that we've done in the past? Isn't that a summer program?
Yeah, we're not planning on that. I, I will say, there's, there's a whole story behind that one, but that is, that has been a less effective program. Let's just say that.
I, just to jump in to dovetail back to that, the case management thing I've been trying to throw up. I, I'm wondering if we can look within our existing ranks, because I, I recognize that, you know, trying to create a new position, fly a new position, hire, interview, you know, you're, you're well into the fall realistically. But just for the immediate needs, you know, if you look at our high school signups for summer school, it's pretty anemic compared to the number of Fs we have out there. So, you know, we've been beating the bushes, sending out information, you know, links to the summer school application and making calls and doing all of our usual stuff. But really, I think that, and again, it ties into the mental health piece, you know, these students don't even know they need help necessarily until we can connect with them and somehow get them to understand, you know, what their options are. So I'm wondering if, you know, perhaps an existing, almost like a teacher on special assignment or, or an existing school counselor, mental health professional, you know, someone in our ranks already that, that, you know, has the insider information. that, that, you know, has the insider information, so to speak, that we can just deploy a person or persons to try to, uh, you know, cause we've gotta get the students to summer school in order to get them to recover the credits, you know. So I feel like, you know, we're gonna have, yeah, we have three periods. You know, hopefully we'll get teachers hired. I know that's a struggle, but, uh, there's a bunch of students that, uh, are, are not filling out the application for whatever reason.
So it sounds like for next steps then, it's similar to what you were saying for the summer school. We need to kind of triage and figure out, um, you know, hiring so we can make a plan. Is that correct?
Well, next steps will be, which you'll hear on Tuesday, is that we're gonna have to have a short, short-term plan in place for the end of the month. So that's, that, that, that will, that will be in place. We've got about, we've got less than two weeks to do that or two and a half weeks, which is pretty unusual, given how late we found out what the doll, the real dollars were. But that's, that's normal for this year. It's just a different year.
Yeah. Okay, so we do have another meeting right after, well, started four minutes, should've started four minutes ago. So thank you all for coming, for your insights. Really appreciate you spending your Saturday morning with us. Um, and so with that, we are going to adjourn.
Thank you all.
Thank you grandma.
Bye, thank you.